We're going to call to order the meeting, Town Council meeting for September 19th, 2017, Hobby Room. WCAT will be filming and recording for future broadcasts. We're going to call the meeting to order. Counsel, clerk?
Counsel Ringman here. Counsel Callan?
President.
Counsel Christopher?
Yeah.
Counsel Littori?
Yes.
Counsel Boyajin?
Yep.
Counsel Delvento?
Here.
Counsel Davento?
Yep.
Vice President Boncory?
Here.
President Sanford?
Here.
Thank you.
A pledge allegiance, please. Counsel Ringman, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As distributed the minutes of September 5th to the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I will abstain if not at that meeting. We do have on our agenda a presentation by the joint public hearing also of the planning board and the council. We're waiting for one more member of the planning board, which will be here soon. We're going to ask if we can take, suspend the rules of the council and take something out of order. We know we have a lot of you folks here from the center and some considerations for the center. So if I can have a motion?
Motion to suspend.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just to give you a little overview, you know, we've been hearing, and we put a pilot program in place, you know, a few weeks ago after a long study done with many, many hours of public hearings. With that being said, we wanted to see in real time what was happening in the center. We've got lots to do down there relative to infrastructure. We're looking for some developments to come in, which we're excited about. However, we know it has affected some of you maybe in a direct way and some of you in an indirect way. So what we're doing is, I'm bringing forth a motion. I'm going to ask Counsel Christopher, who's been a big part of this push to make this change, forward in recognition of some of the concerns that you do have. Counsel Christopher, if you would?
Motion to modify the current French Square Hagman Road pilot effective October 1st to reopen the Hagman Road parking lot and reclaim a single travel lane for motor vehicle access from French Square to Pauline Street. The modification to the pilot will create an expanded and widened sidewalk along Hagman Road, maintain the closure of the north side of French Square adjacent to the old Samuel's Pharmacy, maintain the pilot testing of the one-way on Jefferson Street heading out of French Square, maintain the pilot test of the left-hand turn off of Woodside Avenue northbound onto Bartlett Road southbound, and maintain the pilot test of the reversal of Adams Street.
Okay, motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel Delvento, open up for discussion.
Discussion. Is your motion assuming Hagman Road, you said one lane of traffic and opening, so I assume the right side is going to be open, which would enable parking on the right side of Hagman, it will also enable access to the Hagman Street lot. Are you saying that there's not going, in your motion, does it have parking on the left side of Hagman?
Yes.
Parking will be on the left, not the right.
Only on the left because there are spaces on the right?
All right, hold on a second. So, yeah, the thought process is now to continue to park you on the left side of Hagman Road. On the right side, what we'd like to do is bring the barriers back right beyond where the parking lot is, right even with the Citizens Bank. From that point on, that'll be completely open as it has been in the past. Coming from French Square up into the Citizens Bank, that would be one lane going out. Now, we may lose a couple of spaces here on the left or on the right. We really want to open it up because we know that's been an issue for lots of people. We want to open it up, but we still want to see with the pilot if we can gain some green space there that can be attached to French Square. To be determined, only a pilot. Okay? So we're hearing your concerns. We're trying to make the adjustments as we go. So that's what we're trying to do here. Anyone else from the council? Counsel Boyajin?
So when we, if we're reopening Hagman Road kind of leave French Square, why do we need to reverse the Adams Street if we're going to decompress that area? Because I thought that was a concern, is people couldn't get back to, get back to the center easily because we're closing the access from Hagman, I thought.
I think we've seen the experiences that we've had with Hagman Road. We have not in real time seen the experience that we may have with Adams Street, and I think that's part of the original proposal from the council. We worked hard to come up with some considerations. If in fact it doesn't work, we'll make an adjustment there also.
What was the reason to close Adams? I thought that was a TSAC suggestion from January. It wasn't, it wasn't a council suggestion. It was more?
It was, it was a recommendation made by TSAC to the council, which we adopted for the pilot program, if I recall correctly.
What was the reason behind that, Chief? The Adams Street?
The January minutes that you speak of was the issue that was brought on in January to TSAC. TSAC opined not to reverse it at that time. With the town manager McKenna and myself talking about the pilot project, he wanted to test that to see if we could pick up efficiencies in the center loop area and looping around. So we put that as part of our pilot to see if we can make any efficiencies or pick up any efficiencies by reversing that, that street.
So that was independent of closing Hagman Road or anything like that? It was just pure?
That was-
That was all part of the-
Part of the pilot. So it all came as one recommendation to the council, with my memo, which we did post up on the projects and plans and presentations site for anyone to review from the public.
Counsel?
Counselor?
Wasn't that because of the accidents that were happening at the end of Bartlett Road? So try to avoid them all spilling out to Pleasant Street?
We did review, we did review accident history at TSAC. There wasn't a substantial accident history-
There wasn't?
-in the last year. There, we go back five years, you do have accident history there, but recently there was no pickup of accidents that would deviate from any other intersecting way on that, on that Pleasant Street, Main Street.
Okay, Counsel Littori?
Back on Hagman Road, this proposed amendment, would it, for Citizens Bank, would they go back to regular access to the drive-thru, which would enable that little cross street from Hagman to Jefferson, to Putnam? So they would not be accessing the, would the drive-thru go back to the way it was before this pilot program?
I think we need to look at your motion tonight and look at the vote and then make those adjustments, meeting with the DPW director, the fire chief and myself, on how does that affect that, that circle and what side of the street we're trying to pick up?
Expanded sidewalks on.
So that would matter. If we're trying to pick it up on the chamber side, and I'll just say chamber side so no one's confused, then that, I don't see any reason why that couldn't go back to the normal drive-thru. If we're trying to pick up green space on that other side, then we'd keep that closed for, for the continuing pilot.
And again, let's not forget, it's a pilot. You know, we've made these changes. We've adopted them for the pilot, the time of the pilot through the end of October, and I think we'll have some real data as we go forward. DPW director, anything you can speak on relative to citizens?
I'm kind of confused about the amendment myself. I mean, you're saying-
Okay.
-one lane of traffic, expanded sidewalk. I haven't seen a drawing. I haven't seen any of it.
No, no, no. We know.
I'm not prepared to speak on it.
Okay. All we're trying to alleviate is the pressure of the traffic being able to exit from French Square right now and alleviate that issue right now. Everything else remains the same. We'll be talking about designing sidewalk kickouts and stuff like that as we go forward.
I think it's just important to let everyone know what you do pick up is you'll pick up the front parking spots in the Hagman lot. You'll pick up parking along the chamber down to the, to Pauline Street on the left-hand side. So what you're picking up, and you still have a lane of traffic exiting-
Substantial.
-is a substantial modification to what's currently being seen.
Right. Correct. Counsel?
No, that's, so we're opening, I might suggest touching base with the business stakeholders in the area about, and be a little bit more specific so they could take a look at what you're talking about because it might be hard to visualize with us just kind of talking about it right now.
I think most of the businesses have been in touch with most of us relative to wanting to open up Hagman Road.
Oh, no, I agree with you. I just, so that they understand what you're talking about.
If you want to put it on hold, Counsel, until that point in time when they get back to us, I'd be glad to-
I don't believe, I was actually the one encouraging it a while ago. I think it was really about actually taking the time to communicate with them.
Counsel Ringman?
I support the modification of the traffic study, and I know that the, the orange and white jersey barriers are necessary to block off some lanes of traffic. Wondering if that's necessary all the way down Hagman, if for, for it to close off one side of parking, just because they're a bit off-putting in, in terms of appearance, and maybe we could accomplish the same thing with, with smaller, no parking signs if we want to test out the parking flow.
I think we can discuss that as we go, but opening up Hagman, I think, is the most important, in my opinion, right now. And then we'll, and gaining those parking spaces back for the merchants. I love the fact that we're using the, the other parking lot up next to E.B. Newton. I think that's great, especially if you're business owners, you park up there and customers can park in front of your, your businesses to do business with you. Anything else from the council? Counsel Littori?
So again, just because I think it's confusing for me, and I'm sure it's still confusing for some people out here. So what I'm envisioning here, and please just tell me if I'm wrong, so-
Oh, you know I will.
Going down Hagman, the right-hand side, before you get to Citizen Banks, there's a block of stores.
Correct.
That, there will be no parking there. That will be extended out sidewalk potentially there. At Citizen Bank, down, it's going to be open as it was August 25th.
Right, right.
So my suggestion would be that the Citizens Bank drive-thru would go back to normal and the, and the traffic pattern in the, in the parking lot would go back to normal. And my last question is, so everybody understands, if we were to pass this tonight, do we have a date when this would take place?
October 1st is the motion.
October 1st is the motion. And there's a reason for that.
Yeah, and certainly the reason is we need to deactivate the area. Those juries barriers are on lease. That's to the DVW. We have to call the company, have them removed also. It doesn't seem to open it to close it for the Saturday. So there's a lot of coordination that still has to be done after these votes.
Okay. You have the counts. We have the counts to do.
Yeah.
We'd like a full month of data on those counts.
Yeah. Anyone else? Hold on, just from the council, please, first. Counsel Boyajin?
Are we considering anything, like, I know we all went to the parking presentation. Are we considering obtaining the services of an expert like that to look at parking throughout the center business district from an expert opinion? Is that something that has been discussed yet?
Yeah, we're certainly exploring that with the Transportation Committee as well, and certainly as we move forward with potential other developments in the center that we might want to consult with an outside parking firm to make sure we get it right, to make sure we get the signage right, make sure we get the crossovers and crosswalks right. So we're not, we wouldn't, certainly we're open to that.
Anyone else from the council? Okay, we have a motion. It's been made and seconded. All in favor of the amended change for the pilot program? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? I have it. Thank you. You have your-
Do you want to have the speakers first?
Yeah, is your fourth member here?
No.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to open up to public comment. We'd rather have your, your forum here. Public comment? Yes, Madam?
Right.
Just your name and your precinct?
Diane Sands, Precinct 5. I have a few questions. A lot of this is foreign to me, so I don't know who brought this up. I realize we need to fix the center up, but I don't know what the plan, how this big giant plan came about. I don't know who's paying for it, and I don't recall voting for it. Do we get a vote on it?
Well, what we've had over the period of the last four years, since we've had public hearings, we've had consultants come in to take a look at the project and what we're trying to accomplish. Since then, the council has moved to push projects forward, to apply for grants for infrastructure, and approve some of the preliminary stuff, including engineering. What we're trying to accomplish now is a final plan on how traffic will travel through the center, and we do have $2.4 million, I believe, from the state to start-
Right.
...the drainage and things like that. All of the public meetings that we had, which were many, many, many hours, people had, residents, businesses all had input into. And we took all of that input and put it together in a package, which became the master plan. The master plan was adopted by this council, and that's basically what we're going with.
Do we get a vote on it?
Is the community?
Yes.
You have your representatives here. That's how, and we had many, many hours-
We got votes on the school, so what, on the different schools we put out. This is a big-
Different funding sources. The school was an override. The center project is a general bond, not an override.
So that's a little bit different.
So what if we disagree with our representative?
Well, again, you can vote them out, I guess. Anyone else?
Yes, I have one other question. That route that you said, I'm a little confused with the new pilot program.
Yeah.
They're going to be open on the right side?
The Hagman Road?
Yes.
Yeah, it's going to-
But then you have green space next to you when you're going to pack on the left side.
Well, the final plan, as, as DPW director has said, we don't have a final plan. We're in the process of either dealing with some landscape architects and some planners, so that will be presented to the community going forward. But we, we need a basic idea of what, what routes we're going to be traveling, what roads are going to be open, and what the engineering that's going to be going below the ground is, is going to take place.
I understand that, but why is it maybe more green space? That's a stupid question, I know.
Well, that's, the consultants came back and said, you know, we could use more of some, you know, for outdoor dining, for, for people coming and park little areas for dining and things like that. But that's part of the consultant's recommendation.
We just agree with consultants.
I wish I saw you at some of the other meetings.
I know. I wish I knew about-
Anybody else? Ron Beck, here.
I'd like to commend the council for making the move, listening to the merchants, because it really was having a negative impact, and also listening to the residents. My only concern is Adams Street and the test of changing the directions. That was something that was done many years ago. That used to be a two-way street, and the Board of Selecting had it changed by way of the police department and TSAC at the time because it was dangerous. There was too much traffic going back and forth. There was kids living on the street. The other issue was the turning, taking a left back to come down into, into the center.
Right.
Whether or not there's enough clearance there for fire, fire apparatus.
Yeah.
So I would urge that you really take a look at possibly just beginning changing it, because I think the residents in that area, you know, have a lot of concerns about more traffic. All they have to do is take a couple of hundred feet more to go up to Pleasant Street to take the left and come back into the center. So I think you're going to be infringing on the neighborhood.
We get a lot of restaurants down there in the center, which is nice. People that come out of town, which is great. And that's at nighttime. So people, you know, we, we get, we get some like lights down there. They have free advertising products. All our businesses down there. And these people get come into town and say, geez, look at that, the jewelry store I like, the jewelry store. I need a battery. Maybe they'll come back. And, you know, there's no lights. They come and see. Let's put them with free-
Talk about lights around roadway?
The seven lights are on.
Okay.
Same lights are on. Tried to do this for six months now.
All right, we'll try to get that taken care of. Town manager?
I think I just signed the contract with the electricians, though.
Okay.
I'll have DVW direct that.
We appreciate that. Thanks a lot. Anyone else? Yes, Madam?
Steve Rockus, Precinct 5. I own a business down the center. Stick up with what Ron had said here. There's no plan for Adams Street. A lot of Adams Street people here are not for it. I really believe you need to listen to them before you reversal of them, of that, to get their, their buy-off and really talk to them. I know none of them want this, so there's really no, as the interim town manager said, there's really no historical data over the last couple of years. Five years ago, there's been some data, but increased accidents. I don't really see anything. It wasn't a really recommendation. It wasn't the master plan. It wasn't any of the business studies about reversing Adams Street. They really feel, I'm kind of speaking on their panel a little bit, that was kind of pushed onto them. And then second, I'd want to see prior to actually expanding that green space, what's it going to look like? You know, are you going to put jersey barriers up there? Different type of signs? Before, you kind of agree with adding the green space. I think it would be really great to talk to the business owners that it would be affected, to try to make that look as good as possible. The jersey barriers don't have a good look to it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not planning on, I don't get anybody's planning jersey-
But as part of that motion, you already kind of talked about something, but there's no plan as to what's actually going to be there.
What we're trying to do is alleviate the issue that's presented before us in the last week or two, and that's the exit out of Hagman Road. The rest is to be determined with input from the cops, from the public and from the council.
Yeah, I think prior to making that suggestion of actually adding more green space, we actually talked to the business owners prior to actually getting there. I know a lot of, we're here, a lot of people make it here.
Well, you've been, you've been at many of the meetings.
Yes.
Have you transferred that information to some of the business owners?
I think most of them.
Over the last year or two?
Yes.
Okay, well, I appreciate-
You probably asked them already there.
Yeah.
Most of them are here. I told them to come last night.
Thank you. Steve, I mean, Guy?
See, I ran this night, moved on Friday Avenue, but I've gone out of the centers of restaurants. And I read a little bit of the master plan. And one thing that literally jumped off the page, I think, was the comparison of this plan to projects that have been done in Burlington, Vermont and Boulder, Colorado. Burlington, Vermont is over double the size of Winthrop, and does not have the space restrictions that you have, because it's not basically an island, which it is. Boulder, Colorado is five times the size of Winthrop. Its population were over 100,000. Again, no space restrictions. So is there any data comparing a town or city approximately the same size as Winthrop, that this has been done successfully, or is this going to be cut from raw cloth and whether it works about, we've got to deal with it?
Now, the only thing I can tell you about the master plan was, they may have shown us examples from certain areas in Boulder or wherever else they may have pulled it from, but that doesn't mean it's necessarily good for Winthrop. They showed examples of particular areas and how they work. No different than we have the center business district. We have Metcalf Square. We have, you know, other districts in town. Each one of them had their own unique characteristics. And I think anything that was pulled in to the master plan was based on something that might work in Winthrop, not necessarily that we want to work, like Boulder, Colorado.
With what would probably fit in Boulder-
Oh, you're right.
The whole town would fit in.
Anyone else? Yes, John?
John Vitale, Precinct 5. Involved in the issue for a while, even before the master plan came out, by the way. It's been an issue that's been around the town for a-
Could you speak up, John?
I'm sorry, yes, I will. John Vitale, Precinct 5. I totally support, also a considerable motion. I think it's a great motion, terrific motion. It's an opportunity to start taking a hard look at what I've been calling various terms to describe the Hagman Road. I don't call it a pilot program. I call it other things, but there's too many women in the room. I don't know exactly how I feel about it. It's kind of a temptation disaster. I love to call it that. But that's one of the reasons that I like this. Really, really support the most, because it is an opportunity as a town to start working our way out of this conundrum, if you will, because it's something that's must-fored, hopefully. I, on a couple of points, I agree with the comments that have been made about the problems with Adams Street. That was my first home. When I was taken home from the hospital a long time ago, when we had a wooden hospital, that was my first home, on 22 Adams Street. I don't remember any of those days directly, but I-
Was it a two-way back then?
Two ways.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Because I was going to war, so few vehicles around. But, so I have sort of an emotional type with Adams Street, but I do talk to a lot of residents who are on Adams Street today, and they are totally opposed to the proposed reversal of change. That I can tell you on a first-hand basis. So I'm also somewhat concerned about the existing shot section of Jefferson Street in front of, of Cafe de Light, which is, and it's caused some traffic issues as well. I have noticed, for example, a lot of vehicles coming down Jefferson Street Hill that would normally keep on going through there and taking it right there and onto Hagman Road and so forth. A number of those vehicles have been taking a wrong way, left turn, going by the street, you know, the troughs and the alley and so forth, the wrong way, and merely hitting pedestrians from, you know, I've seen a couple of vehicles, you know, doing that too. So I think that, you know, that situation with the section of Jefferson Street needs to be looked at. I agree with Counsel Boyajin that one of those things that will be very helpful here would be the engagement of an independent traffic consultant to look at, you know, the, you know, this, you know, these traffic recommendations for the town. But again, this particular resolution, this, this motion, I think is, is really positive and I fully support it.
Great, thank you, John. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Public comment? We're off board. Okay. We'll take right here, and then we'll go to Ann next.
Scott McAllery, Precinct 6, owner of Scott's Otter Repair. I'm for revitalizing the center. Most of you know, I've been to most of the meetings over the last couple of years. The one thing that I dislike is that my shop isn't included in the end of that plan. I've sat through many meetings, and people make ignorant comments, but nobody's come to me, whether it be the town or other people that have been in the audience that have said stuff, and tell me what they don't like about my shop and what could be changed. About five years ago, Jim Soper came down, gave me a little list. Within three days, I took care of all those endpoints. Since then, nobody's said anything. I'm for making the property look better. I'm for making the center look better. I just don't understand what it is with my particular otter repair shop that is a problem with the center. So that's, if there was any endpoint.
Thank you, Scott. Ann?
Um, Ann, that says, is there a change in the parking policy for the center?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
In regards to what?
Is there like two-hour?
There is two hours on, on the books. Part of the pilot, we gave out warnings to collect data on how many people were staying longer than two hours, so we can report that to the Center Business Parking Study Committee to see how, how many hours each spot should be. So there's a review of parking times that will happen on a different board, in a different committee, to review all of that.
And-
Some people did get citations for expired stickers, unregistered motor vehicles, for nothing to do with overtime, parking overtime.
But there's, so there, there's no restriction to the Hagman essential?
It's, you know, we have the restriction on the books. It's two hours. It's been on the books forever, but it's under review.
But we have not been enforcing that?
We gave warnings out.
Warning? Is that your question, Ed?
Well, so are we, as, as owners and employees, is that where?
Well, we encourage your owners and employees, they're going to be there for a long period of time, to use the satellite lots on the outskirts, that we hope to be making them long-term parking in an overall parking plan. So we would like the closest spots to be customer parking, and that's good for you and good for, and good for us.
So is the two-hour limit, is that nine to five Monday, Friday?
That is nine to five, nine to five. It might be Saturday. I'll, I'll check with that in with the parking. It's on the evening. It ends, most of our parking ends at 5:00 P.M.
Okay, so, so for all the restaurants that use the pilot, we're, we're-
At night, right.
So, so not initial?
Right now, not initial until they review that.
All right. Thank you.
And again, as we go forward, I'll let you speak in a second. You know, we're going to try to accommodate as many businesses as we can. We know some businesses are two hours, some businesses are one hour, some businesses are three hours, four hours. So we're going to, you know, try to incorporate as much flexibility and to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to, for their businesses to flourish. Yes?
Jim Murray, Precinct 6. I'd like to commend the council for revisiting this pilot program. And may I make a suggestion that the Jefferson Street extension is an accident waiting to happen on Saturday mornings. If any of you have social media, you've seen the pictures of everyone parked everywhere, packed in crosswalks, double-packed, triple-packed, parked in front of barriers. And it's one thing for someone to call and let's respond. I think as long as this pilot is going to go and that's going to be shut off, there should be a, a detail there in the morning from eight to 12.
Saturday's is the biggest?
Saturday morning is the, is the standard.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Nick Seolis?
Nick Seolis, Precinct 5. Like, all I've been hearing about is consultants and developers. I'm not hearing about residents, okay? I'm very disturbed about this. You can be, I've been directly impacted by what's going on down the center now for four months. Half of Pleasant Street's being worked on, 239, 249 Pleasant Street. I get impacted on Somerset Act. The bottom of, of the center's being worked on, we get impacted on Somerset Act. It has been horrible the last four months. We've had dirt in the middle of the road. Everybody's very much concerned what's happening here. And a lot of the residents last night were ready to go to the planning board meeting, and the whole entire street was going, okay? And it was canceled, so we couldn't make that meet respite. We are very concerned. We heard there's been a lot of changes now-
We heard there's been a lot of changes down the center that we were not aware of, okay? Variances have been changed, height limits have been changed. The number of parking spaces per unit has changed from, I don't know, it was 1.5 or 2, to 0.5. We hear this, it's in the book that someone can buy a public parking space for $2,000. There's a lot of changes that have taken place. And I really feel that there's been a neglect. And the people of Winthrop have not spoken to residents. Residents are upset on Somerset Ave, residents are upset on Cottage Park Road, Barton Road, Adam Street. That's the entire center area. As this gentleman said, we're not Boulder, Colorado. We're a very small town, 1.2 square miles, okay? If you do some of the development down that center, you are going to impact the families of Winthrop that have been here for 50 years, okay? If you're going to be talking about excavators, cranes, trucks. We have children on Somerset Ave. We have four or five people who are in their 90s, okay? We can't go through that. It's not going to be a good quality of life. And some of these decisions are being invaded by people who do not live in Winthrop and who go home at night and really don't really look at what the people in the heart of Winthrop is beating. Every citizen in this town can't make it here tonight. People are working, we have a lot of, we have a changing community, we have immigrants from different countries that are working at restaurants that don't know what's going on here tonight, okay? Somebody here has to get through to the residents. Because nobody walked up my street. When people want my vote, they walk up my street, they say, hey, Nick, how you doing, this and that? They talk to all my neighbors. Now, one of my neighbors knew the changes that took place. Now, if there are going to be changes, then our representatives should walk up and say, listen, you know, we're changing this code. We're changing this building code. What do you think? Nobody asked us one question. We are, the vein that runs right to the center. Longtime families on these streets, same with Pleasant Street. The top of our street, you cannot get a fire engine through there. As a matter of fact, Santa Claus changes, he doesn't come down Somerset anymore. Because they can't get the, they can't get the fire engine down. So the top of the street, we have six cars. Last Saturday, after everybody was doing the politicking down the center, at about 2:00, one of our neighbors took a picture. The cars were halfway down Somerset Ave. You do not have enough parking down the center. Right now, it's restricted with these spaces being taken away. It's the antithesis of what you want to do. You're taking away spaces and you're telling us you have the space to do development. There's got to be some rationale here and logic. I really believe you're going to get a lot of backlash from the residents of Winthrop. You really should move forward, do a survey, take it to the people, have people tell you exactly how they feel. Every council should walk up and down that street and say, how do you feel about this? How do you feel about that? Because right now, it's all in the hands of the planning board and the council. You have to do what's right here. We are Winthrop, we're a seaside community, okay? You cannot turn us into an urban community. We don't have the space. You just don't have the space. And if you do too many changes, too abruptly, you will change the essence of this jewel of a town. Thank you.
Betsy Shane, Metro Chamber of Commerce. I just want to say thank you for making the change. I know that the pilot and the data collection is important. But also, the economic vitality of our businesses is very important. And I think there was some negative effects that were happening because of this. So hopefully, we have the backup and it will help alleviate some of those negative effects on our center businesses which struggle at this.
And I did hear from a lot of chamber members, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Who else? Yes, Martine?
My name is Marty Maschus. My wife and I, we own the La Siesta Restaurant, right in the center. We are, we have an open mind, you know, I think, you know, Winthrop is a little lost, you know, in the center. One of the things that I really want to address to you is not to forget the businesses that we are there in the center, that we have been there. I started, it's going to be 11 years in December. So I started there with a little place. When I came here, the center was dead. You know, the businesses that were common, they were dying in six to eight months, they were gone. And I took a chance. And I struggled, it was difficult, you know, my first five, seven years, I probably had, I don't know how many attempts that I wanted to sell my restaurant because I was struggling, you know. So you had to understand, you know, that we have a lot of nice little businesses right in the center. I give credit to the ones that have been there longer than me. Mr. Latery, Raymond is not here, but his wife is here. And other little places that have been there longer than Anna, you know, Cafe Delight, you know, those ones. They have struggled, they've been there for years, for years. And as my experience is, like I said, I struggle. A lot of times, people, they say, they think that I'm making millions because it's three hours that I'm busy, okay? It's three hours that I'm busy, between six, you know, from six at night, okay? And through the years, we've built, I have great, great customers from Winthrop.
Including the governor.
Yes. But I was able to build a clientele, probably 60% of my customers, they come from outside. I told some people the other day, about a month ago, I got this couple that came. And I asked them where they're coming from. They came all the way from Pepperill. The only reason I know where Pepperill is, because I used to live in Anshua. And 111 is right there, you know, so that's. So when people come to Winthrop, to our restaurants, you know, to our businesses, you know, they want to be able to park or not, you know, park it right across, close to where our businesses are. And this weekend, the last couple of weeks, believe it or not, it did affect us, our business. It did affect us, myself, our lawyers, you know. And on Friday, I had this couple, the local guys, local people, they said that they haven't been in the center, but they read in the newspaper, you know, what was going on. And they decided the husband really wanted to come to La Siesta to have dinner. So they came. And then they were just having such a hard time parking around or dealing with the changes that they did. The wife was like, yes, let's go, let's go, we'll come back another day. But finally, whatever. But those are the things that are, please, I'm asking you, please don't forget are the businesses that are right in the center, okay?
Absolutely.
Just a question, Cheryl Peeling, precinct five. I live on Adam Street, and I was just wondering, none of us know what you're hoping to accomplish by changing the direction of Adam Street. Do you guys have, anybody know what you want to accomplish?
Did someone have to hand up a word? Do you answer that question? Yeah, okay. What I think what we're trying to accomplish or take a look at is how the traffic flowed, whether it needed to go all the way up to Pleasant and around, whether it'd be more beneficial to the businesses in the center without impacting, you know, residents to an extreme. So I think that was the emphasis, you know, behind the thoughts.
So taking all of the business traffic and putting it down residential street, you guys are hoping that that's, you don't think that that's going to affect?
No, no, but depending on the time of, we wanted to get a real time, a real feel, depending on what time of day it was, depending on what the parking was like on Adam Street, depending on what was happening in the center. We're just trying to gather data to see what's the best approach to make the center work and work for the residents in and around the center.
So what's the problem with having people go and unblock and just get right on Pleasant?
I don't know, I'm not an expert in that. This is a recommendation that came through, you know.
So who recommended it?
T-SAC, was it T, it came out of T-SAC, I'm not sure. Is that where it came from?
And that's what you guys keep getting, that they're going to rise and done. It's ridiculous.
I'm just Karen McDonald, precinct five. I want to tell you the comparison between the Toca Boppa Road and Pleasant Street and Adam Street onto Woodside. Everyone knows when you get up to Boppa, I mean Pleasant Street, you have a fence. Sometime you see through the slabs, there's no parking. Take yourself down Adam Street, there's a fence with bushes. And there's parking. So you've got to go halfway out of the street before you're going to see the parking down. Tell me which.
Yeah, and those are things.
That's a big comparison.
Yeah, that we need to consider and we need to look at, absolutely, for safety purposes as well. Anyone else, we're just going to, one or two more comments. Anybody who's spoken already, if you don't mind? Yes, we'll let you speak one more time, way in the back.
Okay.
Because you hadn't been to some of the meetings, come on up.
Okay. A question, two questions actually. Diane Sands, precinct five.
I remember you.
So regarding Adam Street, I know nothing about.
Yes.
All I can say is, once, I live on Buck Sloan Terrace, and they changed the way around to come and take the reverse way. And no one could get in their driveway. We had to go up, turn around and come back. Because the street is laid out to accommodate how you would turn to get in and out of the driveway. So it had to be taken away, we had to make it go back to the reverse again. But I don't know what they would want on Adam Street. It might be a rule, but here's my real question. Are we going to have all the grants in place to cover the amount of the cost of this? A little fall back on the tax?
We are, maybe I'll let either town manager or Joe John speak too.
We have secured a little over $3 million, another $500,000 pending. And then some general bond authorizations from the council to make up the difference on the project. So we did post, I have submitted to the council tonight, another project. But the prior council meeting, we submitted the center project with all the funding sources. And that is on the town website, on the project. So you can look at, see where all the funding's coming from, what's been secured and what hasn't been secured for this project.
Yeah, so it's a combination of grants and/or bonding from people like MWRA and things like that. So, and it is on the website, just so you know.
Is that confirmed, all those things on the website? Those are confirmed, because I've heard some of them are.
They'll give you a funding source specifically. And they'll have unsecured funding sources, which haven't been confirmed.
Thank you. We're just going to take one or two, if any. If not, we're going to continue our meeting. Anyone else? Okay, Guy, anything you're repeating that anybody else has repeated or something else?
No, I just wanted to do a little comparison. It happened quite a few years ago. And it has to do with consultants and experts and all these people, I think they know what they're doing. Few years ago, somebody came up with the brilliant idea of making sure it's right the one way. And Shirley straight the opposite direction. Then proved to be a complete disaster, especially for the residents in that area. And unless I'm seriously mistaken, the chief or Mr. Callow might have a better idea. Those two streets get a fraction of traffic that the center does. And it was disastrous, we messed with the traffic flow on those two streets. Now you're facing with the busiest part of town. Isn't that sticking your hand into a box full of very angry cats? Because you're going to come out bloody.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bransley. Yes?
And Guy, you just made a great point, because I always bring back the pilot that you done should drive, it didn't work. And we found out it didn't work before it was built and actually done. And that's what we're doing here. Dirty, we've found, testing some things out, we found one thing that really doesn't work. And soon as we noticed that, we get rid of it, and we're making modifications. Now, this foot on Adam Street, is it going to work? I'm not too sure it's going to work, I'm not too sure we'll get a fire truck by. The chief has the ability, it's a public safety issue, to not do it if you can't get a fire truck through there. So we're testing things out before they're built. So that's why, just very maybe ugly, but it's better than digging it up and putting curb in the center coming out. So we're testing things out and seeing how they work. There've been a lot of ideas, there's been a lot of different opinions. So we try it for a few weeks, some people may like it, some people may not. We find out what works, we find out what doesn't. Before you build it, you test it. That's all we're doing.
Just point to what you're saying.
Yeah, we'd like to move on, note, we're not going back and forth. Dan, have you had something?
Hi, my name is Anna, I'm still, I am the owner of the Cafe Delight.
Citizens.
So I'm very bad. But the reason that I'm here is because, just like everybody else in here, we are concerned about our own business, we are concerned about our customers, we are concerned about the residents of this town. Unfortunately, from this time that this started until now, I'm feeling the hit. I'm having a big issue of my customers that come in, say for five minutes, 10 minutes, get this service, and then now they can even park. We have a 15-minute parking, I don't know what's going to happen to that. We have elderly people that come to get their cup of coffee, their lunch. What we're going to do with those people? So that's my concern. My concern is about my customers, concern about my business, concern about the town.
We hear you.
So I wish everybody would take that into consideration.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard?
I really wasn't wanting to speak, but.
Yeah, Richard, Richard.
It was everybody. But all I would like to point out, you know, by the government, so, what I would point out is, gentlemen, there are a few things that the council itself could do to make everybody more content and happy and more, the people in this town involved. Number one, when you get crowds like this, we're expecting you, you close this down and you either go to the senior center or you go to EV New with the space. Secondly, when you're going to hold a hearing, don't have it here for 15 minutes. Have a hearing, a public hearing on a certain subject. And the whole evening is for that subject. And everybody in the town will come and talk, and everybody has a good time doing it. So gentlemen, I'm not trying to criticize you, but I've observed for the last 10 years, the sharp handedness of the thoughts, of the making, the people more comfortable to want to get involved and come and talk to you and tell you their thoughts. Because they know when they come, they're going to stand at the door if the crowd even says very exciting or out in the hallway. When, I've told Mr. McKenna, I think a dozen times, why didn't you take a room over to EV New to make it into a first-class venue? When everybody in the town wants to come, can come. That's all I ask.
Thank you, Richard. Close public comment. And we're going to be moving on to a joint public hearing with the Winthrop Planning Board. And for that, we need a roll call of both entities. Councilor Clark.
Councilor Ingraham, here. Councilor Callow, here. Councilor Christopher.
Here.
Councilor Terry.
Here.
Councilor Boyajin.
Here.
Councilor Varone.
Here.
Councilor Demento.
Yep.
Vice President Moncuri.
Here.
President Sampin.
Yes.
And David Stacio.
Yeah.
Mr. Sapula.
Yes.
Otto Merceret. Robert Carroll. Davis Proctor.
Here.
Christopher Boyce.
Here.
Gina Demento. Cora Mottas.
I declare this combined meeting open. We do have a presentation, we'd like to do a presentation prior to the planning board. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to, and if you can introduce our guest, that would be helpful.
Joe? Thanks. So in recognition of the fact that we have a proposal to, or a recommendation to rezone the old middle school site for a 40R district, Smart Growth District, we've invited Bill Rail and Elaine Vinge.
Yep, close case.
From DHCD. They actually manage the Smart Growth 40R project program for DHCD. And they're going to give us a quick presentation and answer any of the questions you have. Way better than listening to me, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Thank you to both boards for the opportunity to come here tonight. Can everyone hear me? We're going to just do a brief presentation covering sort of what the basics of the program, our activity today, and then some examples. Chapter 40R, Smart Growth Zoning Act is intended to, it's a voluntary incentive program to encourage cities and towns to allow housing in smart growth locations in exchange for certain direct and indirect payments that municipality becomes eligible for. These are some of the developers' projects that have been done so far to date. Elaine is, may jump in if I have a senior moment or something, or she wants to add something. And then we can, you know, Q and A at the end. So there are three basic requirements involving location, has to be an eligible smart growth location, the affordability, and, which is a good, the base is 20% affordability, and the minimum, certain minimum as-of-rate densities that need to be allowed depending upon the building type. For a single family, it's eight units an acre. For two and three family, 12 units an acre. And for multi-family, 20 units an acre. You'll see some notes about the starter home zoning program, I'm not going to get into that. It's a brand-new program and it's part of 40R, but it's, I talked with Joe and it doesn't seem, it's more focused on sort of rural communities that have a lot of undeveloped land. And the direct funding in exchange for the zoning that meets these requirements is ranges, the zoning incentive payment is the initial upfront payment for adoption of the zone. And that ranges from as small as $10,000 for a very. and that ranges from as small as ten thousand dollars for a very small district up to six hundred thousand. And then there's a three, and that's for new, basically the difference in units that are allowed under the underlying zoning, the existing zoning, as of right, whatever that residential is for those same parcels versus what the smart growth zoning is going to allow by right on certain types of land, and we'll get into that. And then there's a three thousand dollar per unit payment for each unit that receives a building permit. And then there's something called Chapter 40S, which is a companion statute, and that is intended to reimburse the municipality for any net increase in school costs associated with the housing. So the locations, three types of eligible locations. One is transit-oriented development around, within a half mile of a transit station, bus or ferry terminal. Bus stops don't qualify, but yeah, it has to be a real sort of station. And then what's called an area of concentrated development, which is a city or town center or other existing commercial district, established commercial district. And then the third category is highly suitable location, which would be just some other location that has redevelopment opportunities, that somehow doesn't fit into the one of the first two categories. Examples might be, we've had a few of them, have been like old state hospital sites, that sort of thing. And that's roughly sort of the distribution of the districts that we have to date in terms of those location types. Some of the basic requirements of the zoning, it needs to allow as-of-right development, housing as-of-right, and the, you know, you can have site plan review, and you can have design standards, but at the end of the day, if a developer comes in and follows the rules, you know, they need to get their permit. And in order to, for, DHCD is charged with basically ensuring that it is as-of-right development by the statute. And one of the ways that the regulations work and how we do that is the zoning really has to be self-contained. So it can't have lots of references to other parts of your zoning bylaw that we have no control over or can't know if they've been amended and that sort of thing. You know, we can accommodate a limited amount of that, where stuff is, you know, dated for a specific, where it's basically frozen to that specific reference. But it, again, we have to know that it's as-of-right development, consistent with the enabling laws. Design standards, as I said, you can have design standards, they have to be, most communities are probably used to design guidelines, which are, tend to be more sort of, they may not be sort of as objective. The idea is with these standards that if it's a requirement, that kind of reasonable people can read it and understand what it means. So there's not a lot of ambiguity. As far as the district itself has to be primarily residential, it can allow mixed use, you can have commercial-only sub-districts, you can allow for mixed-use projects, but, you know, it's primarily intended for housing production mechanism. It can't be 40R development, and this is overlay zoning, so your underlying zoning stays in place, that doesn't change. And, you know, a developer or property owner can develop under their existing bundle of rights, or they can develop under the smart growth zoning. So no one's really having anything taken away from them. The development under the 40R zoning cannot be subject to building moratoriums, building caps, that sort of thing, rate of development. And the district itself, you can't prohibit age-restricted, you can't require age-restricted projects, excuse me. A developer can voluntarily come in and propose an age-restricted project, but the town can't require that. So as far as the affordability is concerned, the base requirement is twenty percent affordability, twenty percent of the units affordable to households earning eighty percent or less of the area median income. Many of the towns, because of, I don't know if you're familiar with, you know, Chapter 40B, and there's the subsidized housing inventory related to that, that because of the subsidizing housing inventory rules that basically let communities count all of the units for 40B rental, if twenty-five percent are affordable. Many of the communities that have participated in 40R write the zoning such that if a developer proposes residential rental, twenty-five is required. Twenty-five is also required for age-restricted projects, or is required for age-restricted projects. The town, the zoning can exempt smaller projects from the affordability requirement, projects of twelve or fewer units. But if they do so, at the end of the day, you have to have twenty percent in the district overall, so you have to sort of make up that affordability somewhere else. And the affordability has to be spread throughout the projects, you know, sort of reflecting the unit mix or the phases of development, that sort of thing. Probably most people know what I'm talking about in terms of affordable housing, but just if you're not familiar with that, these would be sort of the rent limits before the utility allowance is applied, so the actual, depending upon how the utilities are arranged, or the tenant is, or the building manager, or whatever, they might be less than that. Generally, they would be. And those are the income limits, those are household income limits. So for a two-bedroom, a target household would be a three-person household. So as far as the payments, the zoning incentive payment applies not to all of the parcels necessarily in the district, depending upon how big the district is or the sort of character of it. It only applies to parcels that qualify as developable or underutilized. Developable would be like a vacant, you know, infill parcel. Underutilized would be something that is a marginal or declining use. Other types of land, the other category is what's referred to in the regulations is substantially developed land. That's land that's already built to sort of consistent with the existing zoning or exceeding it. So the upfront payment only applies to those parcels that qualify as developable, the units associated with those parcels. The zoning can be applied to all of the parcels in the district. And the density bonus, you know, to the extent you have development on the substantially developed land, you could collect the density bonus payment on those units. But the zoning incentive payment is really focused more on sort of the, you know, the readily developable sites. And then the, I guess that's all I had to say on that. Oh, just that if you apply the zoning to the substantially developed parcels, you don't have to have the same densities, you know. The density just has to allow more than what the existing zoning allows by right. But it still has to be by right development, and it still has to meet the affordability So the process, you know, starts with something like this, and then, you know, if there's a specific site the community is considering, or area, we would come out and look at it if we needed to, and talk through these issues of substantially developed land and underutilized land. Prior, there's an application form that includes a number of attachments, a lot of, you know, maps and parcel spreadsheets, that sort of thing. You know, if you're just dealing with one parcel, it's a pretty simple application. If you're dealing with a downtown area, it's more complex. Prior to submission of the application, there has to be a public hearing. It's not a hearing on the zoning per se, it's a hearing on the submission of the application. We review, we have a ninety-day review period. We'll look at it, and that application would include draft zoning. And at the end of that ninety-day period, we would issue a letter of eligibility. And at that point, the municipality would go ahead, if they would move ahead if they wanted to, they have three years to adopt the zoning from when we issue that letter. And once the letter is issued, we just need to know that what was adopted was the same zoning that we approved. The community comes back in, in a town, you would have to show that the AG had also approved it, the attorney general. Once we have that documentation, the second letter, the letter of approval, is a much quicker turnaround. We're just basically confirming everything that was agreed upon in the letter of eligibility. And at that point, the municipality can begin to, you know, review and permit projects locally under the zoning. Our only involvement in the projects, besides paying out the density bonus payments, is we review the marketing plan associated with the affordable units and the affordable housing restriction. But other than that, it's a local process. So as far as activity to date, you can see it's been concentrated in eastern Massachusetts, but some activity out in Pioneer Valley as well, and we're getting more of that lately. This map is not entirely up to date. We've got forty approved districts across the state with over fourteen thousand units zoned, newly zoned units, over three thousand of which have already been permitted or built. Sorry for all the colors here, the green is showing you districts that have produced units, the ones that are still in blue have yet to produce units. Those numbers next to the towns and cities are the amount of, essentially the amount of units that were zoned in that district, or comprise that district. And then we've got some eligible districts we're reviewing at the moment. And these are the payments that have been issued to date to cities and towns under 40R. You can see that the bolded communities are ones that have, you know, gone over a million. And then the ones in the red rectangles, they've also received the 40S money, so that's a combination of the 40R and 40S money, that's the school cost reimbursement money. We've only had five communities actually apply for that funding, so that helps to explain why only three have been paid. Two of the towns did not qualify. They did not realize a net increase in school costs. So in terms of some of the districts, this is a very small one in the community of Belmont, eighteen units on an acre and a half. What's interesting about this is that it was an old archdiocese property, I believe, and you could see that you could create sub-districts, these little colored shapes are different, so they're tailoring the zoning even on this one point five acres. And because it's a public purpose, and it's, you know, this is not something that, it's not spot zoning, because you're creating housing under a state statute. So they had different densities on just this one point five acres, different housing types. This is another small one in Norwood, also actually an archdiocese property. And it involves some new construction and conversion, adapted reuse of a church. And this is Pittsfield, this was, they've had two completed projects so far, sort of an unusual district because it's kind of spread out. And this is one in Redding. One thing I might add is that, so Redding got to, during the process, or once they adopted a district, they were getting some 40B project proposals, and in part because they have a 40R district, the, you know, they, you know, let the subsidizing agency that issues the 40B letters know that. And that, for that reason, in Redding, and this also happened in Natick, and also, I believe, Easton, the project eligibility letter was denied, the 40B applicant. So, you know, that's not an absolute, I mean, it's not like you do one 40R district and you never have to deal with 40B again if you're not over ten percent or have not one of those safe harbors. But it is something to think about, if you have a district and you're actively implementing it, that sort of thing. This was a very successful mixed-use project right near the train station in Redding. And you can see these different colored parcels here, it's a larger district, and they frankly, they just amended this to add this whole section over here to expand it. But the different parcel colors are substantially developed land and developable, or underutilized land. This is an old state hospital site in North Hampton. And the 40R district, a little, just amended again, this one, they expanded this to include more of the site. I think that was essentially the end of it anyway, so. I don't know if somebody cut me off, but it's fine. So I don't know, people have questions?
Yeah, we're going to open up to the council first and the planning board.
I have a question about the 40S reimbursement for the increased cost of the school departments. Is that a one-time funding, that one-time reimbursement, or is that an ongoing?
It's an ongoing payment. I will, I have to say that the last two years, the two communities that have qualified have only received partial prorated payments. There is not, a permanent funding source has not been identified for that. So that is, that is an unfortunate circumstance right now, but people are aware of it. And what we're hoping is we, you know, if we can, as more of these districts produce housing, that there'll be more of a, sort of a lobby, if you will, for funding for that.
So it's really not guaranteed?
What's that?
It's really not guaranteed.
It's not guaranteed. I mean, it's authorized, but the money is not, you know, appropriated necessarily. Those two communities did get three years of payments, just the last two, they've gotten short of the amount, the total amount that they qualified for.
And I just want to clarify, Bill said it earlier, but the 40S payment isn't direct, just because a kid, or two kids, or three kids are living in the new 40R district, it doesn't automatically give you more money, it has to offset the taxes and the property taxes and all that that's collected by the new investment, so.
I understand, it's still going to be a delta.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
It depends. What we've found generally so far, I mean, obviously it's a very small sample size, but that the communities that have qualified have been ones where they've done more affordability than the minimum required, and they tend to also be in sort of, like, for instance, Chelsea qualified the first year, but I think because they're getting a fair amount of state funding already, they did not qualify the second year, they got additional Chapter Seventy money, you know, the second year. So they did not qualify the second year. But Lunenburg and Lakeville, as I said, have qualified repeatedly, and both of those developments have substantial affordable housing. And because of the way some of that, you know, essentially there's a target housing size for a particular bedroom, you know, you don't want to creating affordable units and having them underhoused essentially, so that does lead to more school kids generally.
One more follow-up to that question. As more communities avail themselves of the opportunity to go into this program, 40R, is the funding for the 40S going to be more competitive, or is it spread out equally among the communities that do qualify for it?
It's spread out equally, it's, yeah, between the communities that qualify for it. But I think that, again, I think the hope is that as, that there'll be more pressure to provide funding as communities participate. But, you know, the Redding project did not, you know, that did not qualify for 40S payments they applied, but they were getting way more tax revenue than they were getting school costs. And, you know, I think one of the things, it's a downtown location, it, you know, it just wasn't a place, they had a lot of, anecdotally, I think they had a lot of empty nesters moving there, people selling homes in Redding, single-family homes and moving in there was what was really happening. I should add too, that it's not, the formula, you may know this, it's not like all of your real estate and excise taxes associated with the project count against the payment.
And prior to the fire alarm going off, I think we had someone who had a question, and then just, was it Council Boyajin?
I don't know, Council Varone.
I was completely.
Okay, you were all done?
Yeah. Just a couple of questions. With the 40S, people that are applying for that, does it typically, this type of development increase the percentage-wise, the number of kids that are coming into the school system, I guess, you know, versus regular housing?
You know, the only.
You may not be able to answer.
I can only answer that to the extent that communities have applied for 40S funding. And you saw that was, I mean, five communities have applied. So my sense is no. I've had anecdotal conversations with some of the town planners and stuff about their, you know, the city planner out in North Hampton, he said, you know, you know, the city planner out in North Hampton, he said, you know, he didn't bother applying because he just knew that, you know, they didn't have a lot of kids. I mean, they've, a lot of the, there's no, unlike, 40B does have a three-bedroom requirement. 40R does not at the moment.
I guess our concern is, our schools are kind of close to capacity, so if this was that, you know, that was my only thing there.
You can't prohibit, you can't, you know, you can't put something in your zoning like no three bedrooms, but there's no requirement that you provide them at the moment. So, I mean, I think it's really, whether it's been market-driven or whatever, we've seen, you know, I mean, I wouldn't say like 95% three-bedroom units out of those 3,000.
With the affordable units that, are, are they restricted in what you can resell them at?
Yes.
Okay. Does that affect property value?
Mostly see rental just because of the market, but there have been some ownership units as well.
So if there are, like, say these are condos and so, and 20% are at 80% value, so they can only be resold at 80% of the value or is?
That's the way it used to work, but we obviously lost a lot of affordable housing that way when the market really went crazy. So now, no, they, basically, there's a, you know, whenever you're selling, whenever your resale is, it's what would be affordable to people earning those incomes essentially at, at that future date.
So you can only resell to, to that income?
Right. I mean, it's a little different. There's a, it's a, it's a formula with a resale multiplier, but that's basically what it boils down to.
Have there been any studies about affecting the surrounding, I guess, housing? Like, if you build in a certain area and that, right next to that district, has it, has it affected the resale value of any of there? I guess my concern is if you're suppressing the market, I don't know.
Well, because it's a, you're adding rights, you're not taking away anybody's rights, so developer still has the, can still develop under the underlying zoning. We haven't seen that. There were some concerns from, I mean, I don't know if you're talking about the affordability or just the.
Resale more. I'm worried about resale of like, if, if you have 20% of the units that you can only sell it, you know, it's a cap. I didn't know if it would affect, say, the surround, you know, if it's right there, say, the few streets that are surrounding it that are residential houses, is it gonna affect their resale?
I mean, 80% of the units are market rate, and so they have to sell, you know? So generally, these are pretty nice developments. So the affordability, affordable units are really blended right in. And, yeah, I, I don't think that's been an issue. I think, you know, MIT did a study about the, on this, their real estate department a number of years ago. I don't have the figures with me, but that's the, that's the only study I can think of. And it wasn't on 40R, it was more broadly on, on affordable housing in Massachusetts.
Councilor Ken?
Quick question back on the, on the schools. So you've mentioned Redding, for example, where it was near a downtown area and a lot, whatever the percentage might be, were, say, empty nesters that are downsizing their house and going to move in. And in that situation, if there was 50 units and 75% of them were empty nesters, so you have 37 units or potentially 37 single-family homes, now families move into them, that doesn't affect us getting a reimbursement, but it does put, like, a town like Redding could absorb another 50, 60, 70 kids, where a town like Woodford might not be able to. And that doesn't get us any money. If somebody, if you have 35 families moving into single families, then now you have another 50, 60 kids going to the schools, it's not gonna help us.
Yeah, and we don't have data on that, so, yeah. Right, okay.
Councilor Cowan, then I'll get to Joe.
So I, I think going back to what Councilor Boyager was saying, when you have the 20% of affordable housing, they're all mixed in, so if, in the regular priced properties. So in other words, if you had somebody who's paying 350,000 for their unit, and you, then you have somebody, affordable housing right next door to them or right, then they're only paying, say, 200. So, and they're all gonna be blended in like that?
Yes.
That will not affect the value of the ones next door selling?
I mean, in a large, you know, building, no. I mean, I, I, that would be a question for an appraiser, I guess, but.
Yeah, yeah. And you have to qualify to buy those low-income ones.
Right, yeah, you have to income qualify, yeah.
You have to qualify a certain income level.
And the ownership ones have to remain affordable, the, the rental ones, obviously. Those can float a little bit, they can move around. If someone goes, you're allowed to go over income by a certain amount, but at, at some point, they, that unit will no longer qualify as affordable and the management company has to find another unit to.
Whoever's buying that is never gonna really be able to make a substantial profit on their property.
Uh, that is the downside of, you know, the way they, they adjusted, they changed it in, in recent years. It's, yeah, there's not a lot of opportunity for a big, big equity gain there.
Yeah, now it's Councilor Cowan.
But it does give people, you know, security, homes, which is an important thing, you know? You don't have to worry about your landlord raising your rent on you.
We had Joe Donalovitz and Vinnie Zepor.
Certainly, I defer to the council and the, and the planning board at your meeting.
Councilor Zepor? Did I say council Zepor? Was there something in your view?
Not at all. I got, I got two questions. I understand the concept and then what the, what the incentives are. What is, if any, the cost of the town to apply?
You have to put together an application. Some towns do it themselves. Actually, that Belmont district I showed, really was the, I think there was an architect or something who lived in the neighborhood. I mean, that was really driven by the neighborhood, in fact. I mean, it was a simple district. The larger the district is and the more parcels that are involved, the more complicated it gets in terms of, you know, you have to provide some documentation on the parcels so we can assess whether something is, you know, qualifies as developable or underutilized versus substantially developed. But we did have a program called the PATH program a couple of years ago that provided planning funds for this sort of thing. Unfortunately, that money was exhausted, so there's no.
So other than the cost of the legwork?
Right. Basically putting together the application.
There's no application?
No, there's no application fee, it's just putting it together. And in fact, the environmental agency is coming out with a new program, I'm trying to remember the name of it, but it is gonna do a set aside for 40R applications, for 40R planning. Not limited to 40R, but smart growth development.
The other question I have is just more curiosity than anything. I see, I see the cities and towns you've got, you've got rolling right now, and what on it, I was just curious if, if any, what the number of cities and towns that rejected 40R? Or once they get into it, realize that this isn't, this isn't for us?
Yep.
And backed out?
We haven't had anybody like, you know, say, here's your check back, and then we're gonna change our zoning back. We've had a few communities who have received, and by a few, I mean, I don't know. Three, yeah, under five, that have, you know, received a letter of eligibility and then not managed to adopt the zoning. And, you know, kind of different stories for each one, frankly. And we've had other communities who have explored it and, you know, have never gotten quite to a formal application, but for one reason or another, decided not to do. I, I'd say it's, you know, that might be on the order of 10, 15 communities. You know, I think some communities come in thinking that they're going to, that every parcel in the district's gonna qualify as underutilized land, and then just because the smart growth zoning allows more than what is currently built on the site, that that site's gonna qualify towards the incentive payment. So I think there's been some communities that, I don't, you know, I honestly don't know if that's the reason or not. I don't often hear back from them.
I was just curious.
I think the other thing is local control, you know? I mean, I think that there, 40B can be done in such a way that there's plenty of control with the design standards, and it just has to be, there needs to be some legwork upfront to figure out what you want. And the way I encourage communities to approach it is, you know, figure out something you like and make that, you know, show us a picture of it, show the developers a picture of it, and that is as of right, and that's in your design standards. And then if they come in and propose something better, you have the ability to waive, and so it can be flexible. You just have to provide sort of one path at least that's reasonably, you know, as of right and consistent with the statute. Thank you.
Anyone else from council?
No, no. I just have one quick question on something you just said. You were, you were talking and saying that there have been some communities that have received a letter of applica, a letter saying that you've been accepted into the program, then they have, then they were unable to approve the zoning. So am I to assume that you would approve the zoning after you got the letter of acceptance? Or would you approve the zoning before you got the letter?
So there's two letters. There's a preliminary approval called the letter of eligibility. That's where we review the draft zoning, the application, we issue this letter of eligibility, then the town adopts the zoning. And then we issue a second letter, just basically acknowledging that you adopted the zoning. So it's a two-step process. Does that answer your question?
And in order to get the letter of eligibility, we need a complete application to review.
Chairman Staciato.
Just a quick follow. So we could in theory then apply for the initial letter without passing the zoning to see if we're eligible in the first place?
Sure, yeah. I mean, there's no obligation to move forward and adopt the zoning, there's no penalty if you don't.
But we could apply without, without first adopting it and see if we're eligible?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's the, that's the.
That's preferred.
That's the norm, that's the requirement.
Yeah, yeah. It's, there's a couple of communities that have like accidentally adopted it first and then applied, and inevitably, we have to, there's something that we have to change in the zoning, so they have to go back and town meeting and re-adopt.
No, that's very good to clarify. And then the last thing would be, what are the other communities that maybe, what are the concerns other communities have with adopting these things? What are the reservations that you've heard?
I think it's, I think the, you know, the as of right is scary to communities. I think that, you know, there are communities for which that's worked, and they got to a place where they were comfortable with their design standards and, you know, I think to other communities, they just, you know, that's, that's, you know, just makes them nervous, you know? What, you know, what do you mean? We don't, we're not gonna have some kind of leverage over this developer to, so that I think is probably the biggest thing.
But you can, do you cite plan criteria?
Right.
To get what you, what you're doing.
Yeah, I think it's more conviction in fact, really, I think, or whatever. I think it's, you know, I think with properly developed design standards and, you know, you can get to a place where.
Chairman Staciato?
Yes. For those of you who don't know me, it's David Staciato, chairman of the planning board. I have three questions, Councilor President Sam, and I also have some general comments. Is that okay that I?
I'll tell them.
Just to piggyback on some of the questions that have been already asked, our planning board is of all volunteer planning board. We generally meet once a month. On rare occasions, we'll meet twice a month. I'll be the first to admit that this is, I look at the statute, I've looked at the communities that have adopted 40R, I've done some personal research, and to me, it's a pretty massive undertaking. Of the communities that have submitted an application, how many, if you know, how many percentage-wise have a professional planner on staff in their communities or have a professional planning board or, or committee that works under the, I just don't know if we.
Right. I'd say it's considerable. Yeah, probably 80%. I don't know, what do you think?
Okay. Thank you.
But it depends, it does depend on the complexity of the district, you know? I mean, if you're, some, some communities have used it much more surgically and just sort of, you know, the, the district and the project are the same thing, essentially. It's not a multi, multi parcel, multi-project district. That's, that's one approach. It's also a way to maybe get some comfort with the, with the process, and you can always come back to us and say you want to amend and expand. We have a number of communities doing that. We recently amended Brockton, North Hampton, Redding, so, and Lowell, we amended.
And there are a couple of communities, especially out in the Pioneer Valley, where you saw that yellow blob on the map, that use their regional planning agency as a front to help local staff.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And the regional planning agencies have just the local technical assistance money that can be used for this type of planning effort.
All right, second question. One of the comments you had made during your presentation was that the zoning code of the existing city or town can't be so complicated or convoluted that pieces of it refer to other pieces of it, or that you're going from one chapter to another chapter. I can tell you from experience, and I've been on the planning board for nine years, that we have a very old code, and we refer back and forth to multiple sections of the code. Tell me how that affects the overall application process? Because I can, I can tell you that I read it one day and then the following day I have another interpretation, another day I have another interpretation, someone will come before the board with a third interpretation. I mean, that's the reality of our, our zoning code.
Right.
So how does that affect the application?
Uh, what, in an ideal world, everything that's required from a zoning standpoint, if somebody chooses, a property owner chooses to develop under the smart growth zoning versus the existing zoning, is contained in that, that ordinance, that smart growth zoning ordinance.
Section on.
Yeah, that section. You know, communities have included references to, for instance, their signed bylaw or something like that. But typically, we require that it's the signed bylaw in effect, you know, on such-and-such date, unless otherwise approved by DHCD. In other words, we can't, we can't have these references to all these sections that we, we, you know, can't keep track of. And, I mean, if you want to amend the 40R zoning, you have to come to us and we amend it. We have to, because we have to basically, you know, confirm that this is consistent with an as-of-right process, and also that the requirements aren't, in the words of the statute, unduly restrictive.
So we, we could carve all the smart growth section of our code that's comprehensive enough?
Right, we have a model bylaw, basically, so, yeah.
And the 40R regulations basically ask for an all-inclusive 40R section of a bylaw.
Okay.
And very few, you know, we wouldn't have, we probably wouldn't allow references to like an affordable section or something, but a signed bylaw, we know what they're all like. So if you wanted to use your existing or you create your own under 40R.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we don't get too worked up about the signed bylaw. I mean, that's not like, gonna necessarily impact, but we do need to, you know, again, there is this language about unduly restrictive, and, you know, if you all of a sudden require gold-plated signs, I don't know why. In theory, I guess, it could be an economic feasibility issue.
Anyone else from the council?
I have one more question.
Yep.
All right. You'd also stated that the underlying zoning doesn't change.
Correct.
So that a developer can come in and he or she can, can develop under 40R or the underlying exist. Why would a developer choose to go to the underlying? They could have already come in and developed under the existing zone. So my question is, why, why, why that dichotomy? Once you go 40R, why still allow the underlying zone? I just don't quite understand that.
It's up to the town.
Yeah, I think it was designed that way because they figured that communities would be more apt to, I mean, passing zoning is difficult, you know? And, you know, it would, it would be hard to get, you know, in other words, to rezone, you know, a significant part of your downtown or something, if you told people, well, I'm taking away your existing zoning rights. And somebody might not be interested in developing residential, you know? But many communities write it such that once you permit the 40R development, the underlying zoning goes away.
Okay.
So it's.
It doesn't.
It does. I shouldn't say many, but some of the bylaws have done that.
You can write your 40R to do that. It doesn't.
Right.
It's totally up to the town and what they, you, all right. Then we have examples of that. I think we just talked about it today, so if you.
I said, thank you, Councilor President. Just, just a couple of things for clarification.
Sorry, I'm joking. I tried to.
We don't joke.
Stuggle it.
Just regarding the process, I just want to clarify, regarding the process, you have a 90-day review period at DHCD, but typically, you feel that these take, what, six to nine months to complete from start to finish?
Uh, well, you know, the, the amount of time that a community takes to put together the application and get, you know, comfortable as a community with it, it varies. And again, it varies with the size of the district and complexity of the district, I think. But, yeah, I mean, I've seen communities. But, yeah, I mean, I've seen communities, it could be a year-long process from, you know, start to finish. In a town, you know, after we, or after you adopted, the AG's got to approve it.
So, that's what I wanted, thank you. That gets to one of my other questions. You said in a town, you're speaking specifically to the municipal form of government. We call ourselves a town, but we're actually a city.
Okay, sorry.
This is our city council, for lack of a better term.
Yes, sorry.
So, our town council, so we wouldn't need AG approval under that.
Okay, yeah. We just need evidence that you've submitted it to the AG.
Okay. That was two. You, you spoke about the majority of the district has to be for housing, and you can allow mixed use. Does that also allow some protection of space within districts for community uses? For instance, if we had a site that we had identified and we wanted to include a community center as well as housing and maybe some mixed business, just as long as a significant portion is set aside for housing?
Right.
That, that would be all right?
Yeah, you could have a community use as one of your permitted uses and your taken uses for 40R.
Okay. You talked about home ownership affordability. Is that, for the home, home ownership with condos, for instance, is that in perpetuity? Or a lot of times with affordability restrictions on sales, there, there's a period before that, 25 to 35 years?
Has to be for at least thirty years.
For at least thirty years, okay. I wanted to be sure of that. If we're going through the review process, we submitted our application, and you feel like you needed some more information, we'd have opportunity to add information, or we wouldn't have to start all over again?
Yep.
And, just, just so people are clear, if you were talking about a proposal, an application that set aside a 40R district where there'd be 100 new units above what's allowed under the existing zoning, we'd get a $75,000 upfront payment, and then $3,000 per unit, once we had the building permits for each unit.
Right.
So, that'd be $375,000 in total for a project of that size, correct?
Yes.
That's without the 40S. The 40S is a separate thing.
Assuming, yeah, the whole parcel is developable, underutilized, qualifies.
I think that, thank you.
I, I had some general comments, just regarding some of the public comments, and what we, as the planning board, have options. If you want to hear that, I can give that small presentation if you want to.
Yeah, like, let's just say, I think we have another question.
I, I just had one, one question that actually falls on, so, on that initial first, like, we submit to see if we're eligible, what's the turnaround on that, that first part?
That's the 90-day thing. The, the second letter is the, is the faster turnaround.
Long.
Because the second letter, we're just, we just need evidence. We're just asking for evidence that you adopted it, and so that's, that's a fairly quick turnaround.
And it's very similar to what we approve, so...
Right. Yeah, I mean, I guess if you make a lot of changes in the interim, then, then it's going to be a slower process, but...
I'm going to allow Richard Dimes, former planning board, to ask you the basic question. And then David with the other.
We all know what we are here to talk about is what to do with the Chase School. Chase School.
Middle school.
Middle school.
Yeah, the middle school. This was a, a Class A constructed building made of concrete. It blasted and knocked it down. But the question I think of is, did the town decide they want to apply for a change? Now, obviously, the destruction of the building would have to be done to get any livable units, the type of housing that it would be. The town, under this type of zoning, it takes, pays the full expense to take this building down, or is the money coming back to the community?
I mean, the town can, actually, up until this year, the town could do whatever they wanted with the incentive payment, the, the initial payment. As of the beginning of FY '18, it has to be spent on capital expenses. But that, you know, could conceivably qualify as a capital expense. I, you know, we don't, we're not approving projects or involved in the project. There might be some other program at the state level that, that could assist with that, like Masworks. Right. There is a program called Masworks, which actually, I neglected to mention, I mean, within the regulations is that, you know, other agencies must give consideration to the fact that a community has adopted a 40R, and what that's essentially translated to is priority within the Masworks program. And we have a pretty good track record in that respect, in terms of communities that have adopted and implemented 40R districts and have applied for Masworks applications. So, whether that would be an eligible expense, I'm not sure, but something that could be explored. But 40R itself is not, we, we wouldn't be involved in demolition costs. But the debt, but, but again, the payment.
I like the, I'm not being that completely involved. At this stage of the game, the city council or planning board can tell me, hasn't there been any, what you might call, bona fide bids by any developer who was interested in this thing?
No.
So, what you're saying, Danny, here tonight is, you've got a structural worth to break down, roughly $3 million in all, to knock it down. Where do we go from here? At this type, at this type, or this program, do you think, is that really one of the major steps that we would be taking with this type of a problem facing us?
This is all, we'd be very careful on speculation. We haven't, we haven't, but we haven't put the property out for bidding process.
I'm not going to know what the expenses, even under this type of program, before it gets started.
Wait, but we haven't, we haven't...
I know you don't.
Put the property out for bid or bidding process at all, so we still have a committee that hasn't even been finalized to examine that.
The other thing, 40B, town is not allowed 40B. We're one of the few communities in the state that qualifies, just because of the location of Logan Airport and so forth, land over Logan Weald and that brings it into that. So, I really don't know how chapter two would affect this type of building. But I, you're talking subsidized housing, didn't call it anything, as opposed to 40B, what you feel?
The units get, would get, the affordable units would get counted on the subsidized housing inventory, so they would give, you know, I mean, you're telling me that it doesn't apply to Winthrop, or that you don't, it's not an issue, but, you know, if it ever became one...
It's not an issue or not.
Is, is 40B an issue? No, I mean, they're not, they're separate programs. Totally separate programs, yeah.
David, you had some finishing thoughts?
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Richard.
Regarding the public hearing and the potential continuation of the public hearing, when, when town council referred this matter to us in July, the planning board did not have a quorum for a July meeting. So, we met in August. When we met in August, we did not have the benefit of Mr. Dimes' presentation, so we were unable to really deliberate this matter, and of course, because of public meaning laws, we're not allowed to discuss it amongst ourselves. So, tonight is the first time we've actually been able to hear this. I, I would ask that you allow us to continue this to the least the October planning board hearings, so that we can take public comment and mulch this over amongst the board, and hopefully, we have a full board at that hearing, because we're missing three people.
Right, yes.
So, I would, I would please ask that of the council. After that, just some general comments. We advertise the planning board meetings just like any other meeting. We do not get many people. I, I know that zoning might not be the most interesting subject, but we, we really do not get a large audience. In my own informal polling, and, you know, I'm born and raised in Wyndham, so I, no matter where I go, I always bump into someone who has a question, and wants to discuss what's going on. Most people want an increased density. They want an increased density because they want to enlarge the tax bases. Most people do not want to sacrifice teachers, firefighters, and police officers. So, most people, rather than having an increase in their own tax, would love to see 200 units come on so that the burden's shared across a larger number. That's where we've been operating from. We are hoping to allow an increased density for those reasons. Also, the secondary reason to increase density is that the business community would want more people. More people brings more commerce. More commerce brings more profit, makes everybody in the community happy. So, I think that that's where we have to go, where we have to move as a community, because we don't have a tax basis other than asking the existing taxpayer to increase his or her share. So, that's just one comment. Second comment is, my understanding is that we have four options. We can allow the property to revert back to residential aid, which would allow single-family homes or two-family homes, depending on the size of the lot, depending on the size of the construction in that area. We have, we have the option of doing an SDOD. We have the option of doing center business.
Correct.
And then we have the option of 40R.
Right.
Of all those options, the only one that meets what we're trying to accomplish for increased density is 40R. Now, again, this is only informal, I've not, we've not had a public meeting, but from what I'm getting for feedback, that's, the other, the other one that's been kind of running neck and neck with 40R is people would like to see a public safety building converted into firefighting police, have a nice public safety building, and then sell off the existing fire stations and existing police. Now, whether that's an option or not for you, I, I think that we can at least write a recommendation, discuss that amongst the citizens, and see if people feel that that's more advantageous than 40R. But I would say that those are the two, two leading things that people ask, which I think that's all I have to say. I mean, if anybody has any questions, I would entertain them, but I ask that you please allow us to continue our hearing in October.
Absolutely. We won't close the, the public hearing. We'll leave it open till, with a recommendation coming forth from you going forward. I think, anything else?
No, thank you, yes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jim, I had another question. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council President Tim. You've said a couple of times, the project would have to be as-of-right under the 40R zoning subset. Who is the final authority on that? So, if there's a dispute between the developer, we get 100 units under 40R, and we want all one unit, but under 40R, we can't say no if the developer considers it going to put 100, three-bedroom units. Who has the final say? Is it the town planning board? Is it the Housing Appeals Board at the Commonwealth level? Is it DHCD? Or does it go to court if there's a dispute over whether or not what's viable would be as-of-right?
Yeah, I think that would go to court. I mean, it wouldn't be something that we would get involved in. We don't, we don't, the only enforcement mechanism we have is if we find out something that, you know, we feel is in conflict with the zoning, you wouldn't qualify for the payment, I guess. But we've never, we've never, I don't think we've ever encountered that.
So, it would not go to the Housing Appeals Board?
Uh, no, not the ADC.
The 40B would challenge the local zoning, would go to the Housing Appeals Board?
It's kind of like other developments, they run their course locally, and then the next step is, then court.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Jim?
Bill, as a follow-up to Mr. Turco's question, could we draft the zoning in the 40R to suggest a, a unit-type mix? In other words, can we say that we, you know, it's a percentage of density, but also a certain percentage of one and two of studios, or one and twos and threes mix?
I don't, I don't think you can do that, but again...
I don't think you can do it in your regular, legally, your regular...
Right, yeah. I think zoning applies to exterior, yeah. But, you know, again, I can just say from experience so far, it has been largely two and fewer bedroom units, excuse me. And I, I, you know, I'd like to think that was the market. I don't know. I hope, I hope.
Yeah, one second. Yes, down the end, Council Beneta.
And to, just to finish my thought on that, you know, the number of units would be, you know, perceived by, would that be by right? Or would also have the density formula, the square footage requirements, and all those other requirements to make it by right also in a 40R? It's not just, it's the entire package?
Yeah, you would have some normal dimensional requirements, parking and stuff.
Yep.
But we, if we look at the zoning and things aren't adding up, I mean, it's not, I'm not saying that we analyze every parcel down to the, but if clearly, you've got some requirement in there that there's no way, you know, somebody can reasonably do the density on there, that's, that's the minimum density anyway, then we'd probably raise an issue. And in a couple of cases, recently, Rockland, they had a significant parking requirement, and I think their density was above the 20-unit-per-acre threshold, I think it was 25 or 30 units an acre. And we were like, where, where's all this parking you're requiring going to go? And, you know, after some back and forth, they reduced their, and I may be getting the specifics of this wrong, but I'm just saying as an example, we, they did reduce the parking requirement in the smart growth zoning.
Jack?
Jack Dowd, precinct three. In your presentation, I noticed that Newbury Port got 520 units built, but there was zero money given?
That's 520 units they have allowed, zoned. They have not permitted a project yet. And in the case of Newbury Port, they did not have a, they needed some infrastructure work to accommodate, basically, as part of the application, you have to certify that you have the infrastructure to accommodate the zoned units. And in the case of Newbury Port, they needed to do some infrastructure work. They are now eligible for a partial payment, but they haven't come in for it yet. But that's basically what that boiled down to.
Yeah, so the 500 is what the zoning allows, nothing has actually been built.
Thank you.
To follow up on Mr. Turco's question about if the town has the final decision, would end up in court? How many communities have actually ended up in court for 40R, and have they actually ever won it since we were...
There are three projects that I'm aware of that have been litigated. One was down in Kingston, where an abutter challenged the, I think the town's approval of the 40R district, not the project. And, you know, there were a lot of things going on with the economy at the time, recession, and the developer eventually just walked away. That was a big project around their commuter rail station. Another one in Natick, where it was an abutter, as I understand it, who wanted the...
He also bid on the project.
Yeah.
No town, no town has ever challenged, okay.
Yeah. And then more recently, actually, Newbury Port, I think that they have permitted a project that is being litigated. I don't know the specifics of it.
In the Kingston example, they, they litigated the process of whether or not there were rare species on land.
Like clover.
I think it was a blue-spotted salamander or something in there.
It was a gravel pit, but...
Yeah.
Actually, in that case, yeah, the natural areas...
Couldn't help it, couldn't we?
All right. Just a quick question, more of an internal question. On that plot that we're talking about, the middle school, how many parcels are on that lot? Is it three? And how are they broken up?
I haven't seen the plot plan. I, I don't know officially.
But that's something pretty important.
Absolutely.
Number, number of parcels for the town own where the buildings sit?
Where the buildings sit.
There are two parcels. Roughly, one of them includes the school building, and the other one includes part of the auditorium, the gymnasium, and the rink.
I thought it was three.
I believe it's only two, and I've had it out several times.
So, that's something we have to look at.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you have two town-owned parcels?
I don't. I don't have a plot plan.
Do we have?
Yeah, we can get through, we can get through.
Yeah, I think...
We had a survey done in this, Brad, so...
Survey that was done, so, yeah, we can get that information. And that's, no?
No. Just one other question. If the town accepts this, if there's a town, there's only laws, if you didn't get bypassed, would you lose any rights in terms of the amount of parking spaces that are required for the development?
Well, the parking requirements under the smart growth zoning could be different than under the underlying zoning. So, to the extent development happened under the smart growth zoning, and that were, that was the case, yeah, but, I mean, it's, it's, again, it's totally, the underlying zoning stays in place, so nobody's losing any rights. If you don't want to avail yourselves of the smart growth zoning, you don't have to. There is in the, there isn't a statute, a clawback, if you don't produce a building permit... There is in the, there isn't a statute a clawback if you don't produce a building permit within three years. But DHCD has the ability to find good cause, and we have done that to date.
Since 2004.
Yes. So, although it's getting a little more difficult as the economy improves.
Yeah, the process for actually taking money back from a town, you can imagine the state taking money back. So it hasn't been implemented yet.
Yeah. Just a little soda?
Michael Cero, precinct six. One thing I wanted to mention about 40R is it's been talked about a lot as a proactive tool. So we're putting all the work up front, as David mentioned, with the planning board, to create the design guidelines of what we would allow to go there. And we don't get ourselves in the same type of situation that we've seen in a lot of the other SDOD buildings, where they are dragged out, these empty buildings that go on for years and years and years, because there is no comfort level of the community and the developer. So here we're putting, you know, the process up front, so everybody knows what the rules of the game are. We don't end up in a situation where we're all wake up one day and we think we might have a methadone clinic next door to us. So these are the things that, this is a very proactive tool, and I just wanted to mention that, that this is what I'm on, I'd like to add.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm getting a little late, so just if anybody else, John?
Just a better question. I think it's a terrific presentation, President. I just want to know, if it was possible, get this, just like a PowerPoint presentation on the town website, so that...
Already managed it. As soon as, tomorrow morning, it'll be on the website.
Great minds think alike, Joe.
I'm surprised you put myself with you, but I appreciate that.
All right, anybody, any other questions that we haven't gone over? Any other concerns from the council, planning board?
Nope.
If not, we're going to close the public hearing.
No, we're going to...
Oh, we're going to continue, I'm sorry. We're going to continue the public hearing till our next meeting, hopefully with a recommendation. Thank you. Denise, that's why you're here. Listen, thank you for your presentation, answering all that question, we appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
To the next meeting, or to the meeting after you get a recommendation from them? Because they're not meeting until October.
Yeah, we'll keep it open until...
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion's been made to continue public hearing. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Need a roll call for that? No, 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 okay. Motion's been carried, thank you. I think we are on correspondence. Council Calla.
It's not really correspondence, because it was a phone call. Do you consider that correspondence? Yeah.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess? All right, we're going to continue council meeting, we're in correspondence.
So I was just going to ask the town manager if, I don't know if I should do it now or later on, if you could give us an update on the reorganization of the Health Department, and how that's going to, when that's going to happen.
Certainly moving forward, Deanna Ferretta is working with the HR director on onboarding the two recovery coaches to town employee status. We're also identifying space for them. We need to move Deanna into a much larger space, since she's going to have the two recovery coaches, a social worker, and a nurse. So my thought process is trying to occupy some of the first floor of the E.B. Newton School, where we can fit all of them in one office area, with the director having her own office in the back. So I'll be happy to entertain any council's opinions on that. We're limited space here in Town Hall, we don't have much room.
No, that sounds like a good idea, actually.
Yeah, I think so. Anything else under, I'm sorry, anything else, Council? Anything else under correspondence, we're under correspondence. Obviously, we received a lot of correspondence via emails for the center considerations. I think we made some headway tonight. I think we've let some people know that we're listening to their concerns, and we were able to see them firsthand. And people must remember, we're trying to do this to accomplish a healthy economic development environment down there. It's not to hurt anybody, but we're working hard to try to accomplish some good stuff. So regarding that, that's the only thing I have under correspondence, generally speaking. Anyone else? If not, we'll go to committee reports. Millerfield Committee?
Millerfield met last night, the 18th. Lot going on down there today. Somebody, if people happen to drive by and they notice the press box going in on top of the home bleachers. We're continuing to work on the home and away bleachers, and they should both be completed relatively soon. The asphalt for the track, the asphalt for the track should begin later this week. The asphalt will be put down in two phases, which will take a couple of weeks. And after that second phase is complete, there's a 21-day curing period. After that point is when you can start installing the final track surface. The other thing that's pretty exciting is probably October 10th is when the turf should start going down. So that will be exciting for a lot of people. The turf, when it started to be put down, it will be put down from the 50-yard line in. The plan is to try to get two work crews to make it go a little bit faster, and they can both start at the 50 and work towards either goal line. So that will be starting on October 10th. And, let's see, what else do we have? We are fully committed to having a Thanksgiving Day game. We feel that that is absolutely doable, that, again, just to verify, we will not have the concession stand or the fieldhouse would not be ready by then, and we would have... And such, but the field will be usable by then. On the school committee meeting, I believe, October 16th, a few of us from the Millerfield Committee, along with representative from Skanska, will be at the school committee meeting to give them a more formal update as to the progress of this and what they could expect to see. Everything else is going well.
Any questions from the council?
I was going to ask that we could borrow the turf for Hagman Road prior to tonight. Just for looks, however, that doesn't need to happen anymore. But if there's any remnants or anything, you might be able to use it here.
We have a couple of pieces left. I was going to use them when...
I know we discussed with Councilman, an infrastructure, well, at Landscape Architects Services, and I'm not sure we want to approach that tonight or not. But what I want to say prior to making that decision, or council making that decision, is that time is of the essence with this center project. We have money that we need to spend by a certain time. We have grants, and, Mr. Calla, could you just give us a little update on that? But I just want to let everybody know, on this council, to let them know how important it is that we get our ducks in a row as quickly as possible, because if we lose this money, I don't think we'll ever be able to come back to the well for it. And that's going to be a tragedy in itself.
Obviously, the infrastructure work has to happen first.
Right.
And I know I keep hearing from several of you that we can use the grant money for infrastructure. And yes, you absolutely can, it's eligible. However, the MWR-8 money is not eligible for the street and sidewalk.
Right.
So if you use that money for infrastructure, you don't have the money to do with the street and sidewalk. So really, that grant money needs to be used for the street and sidewalk improvements.
The grant money we receive from the state?
The grant money from the state. So, which puts us a little bit, you know, behind the eight ball.
Yeah.
But we are running out of time.
Right.
It seems now we do have reengineering to do.
Right.
So, I don't know, I'm starting to get concerned that that grant money will be spent in a time, you know, in the time of law.
So I just want to put this council on notice, that it's that important that we move forward as quickly as we can, making the right decisions. But if we, if we put this on hold any longer, we are in jeopardy of losing some serious money that would be devoted to the center, and it would be, in my opinion, a tragedy. So keep that in mind.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that if we could get, if we could get a vote in whether or not the intention of the council would be to leave it open permanently, Hagman Road, that would allow Mr. Calla to start redesign on the drainage and sewer pipes that would need to be going down there.
Okay.
That would be a positive step.
So what I would say then is to, maybe on the new business, we can revisit that consideration? The council feel comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And again, you know, this is not something we're doing behind closed doors. It's imperative that we get some, make some decisions in order to get this project accomplished. So, yes, Councilman.
So, why don't I then also provide an update about the landscape architects, if that makes sense? The town put out an RFQ for landscape architect firm to work with the center project. And Bob Carroll, who is a member of the planning board, and the EDCAC, along with Michael Hansen from Woodard and Curran, the civil engineer, and I interviewed three landscape architect firms. The interviews were just fantastic. It was really an interesting, really an interesting conversation. The role of the landscape architect is to help design the public space, including, you know, the sidewalks and the lighting and the signage, benches and trees, so that the space is usable for the public, meets the public's needs, and also has the look and feel that we want to have. The landscape architect will also make recommendations about materials to use that are cost-effective, are easy to maintain for the town, and again, still have the look and feel that we're looking for. We settled on, you know, I know that the final configuration of how the center is going to work has not been decided yet, but we did settle on one landscape architect that we think is the best fit for Winthrop. It's CBA Landscape Architects. And it was, CBA had a really great, really great presentation for the interview committee. She talked about having a base design for a landscape plan with the opportunity to add on to that design at a later date if we have more money at a later time. She felt that, and Michael Hansen from Woodard and Curran felt that she would work very well with the engineering work that's been done, even though we may still have to make some adjustments to the plan. She also talked a lot about her public process for the, for the design. And her, she would have at least two public meetings. One meeting to generate ideas about the look and feel that Winthrop residents want to have in the center, and the other would be to evaluate a couple of proposals and suggestions that she's put together for us, you know, renderings. And then folks could kind of vote on what they like best, what they don't like, and... And she also has a lot of experience working on municipalities, which I think is very important. So I think it's going to be really important to work with a landscape architect so that we have a really nicely designed public space that meets our needs and has the right look and feel for the town.
As far as the timing, if we decide to proceed with that, how quickly would she be on board, and how quickly could we get the design? That's critical.
I believe she said she had a 90-day, is that right? Or 60 days?
I believe her process is about 60 to 90 days, and she'll, she'll be open to working with the, with Woodard and Curran, within their schedule as well. We have to get her under contract still, so that's going to require some direction from you to direct the town manager to put her under contract. There's a draft contract that's been reviewed by both sides, and minor alterations are being made, along with a scope of work which is going to have to be amended based on keeping Hagman Road open. So we'll have to amend the scope of work for her, and that might adjust the fee as well.
There was a concern raised to my staff today that, do we need it if we open Hagman Road? If there was a motion here tonight, do we need a landscape architect? Just so everyone can hear what goes on, you know, before these meetings, in my office, my staff. So that's still a concern. It's a, you know, about $64,000 contract.
Which has not been...
Which with no funding source, with an add-on after the project was already done. So we have contingencies built in to the contract, to the overall project. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that. I don't, can you give your opinion as to that?
Yeah, yeah.
Please?
You know, this is an $8 million project. I think it's worth spending the extra $50,000 or $60,000 to really get the design right, so that the center has the look and the feel that Winthrop residents want. We have the public process that we need, and that we have the functionality that we need also, you know, in terms of having, you know, a table and chairs in the right spot to attract visitors. We have trees in the right spots to make it look nice. I think, I think it's really important that we do that.
When you interviewed, did you interview the scope of the work to go beyond all the way down Hagman Road?
Yes, yes, actually.
So that number that we're discussing may be reduced, I would imagine.
We'll reach out and see if that reduces.
Let's see, you know, two things are important, yeah, thank you.
Give it an easy job.
See if we can get the number budgeted, number one. And again, Steve, did you have something?
Terry, actually, there was a conversation that, you know, that was probably connected, I think. It was between Terry and myself, and I guess I'm lost a little bit on, when we speak landscape architect, we're not just speaking green space then, you're speaking the hardscape as well. And am I accurate with that? Because if there is just green space, then, you know, what I was saying to Terry is, it's okay. It was 5,000 square feet of green space, which isn't a whole lot. And if Hagman Road doesn't, remains open, that reduces even more. So do we need a landscape architect just to design French Square at that point? But if you're talking hardscape, now, you know, I got to make sure not only does that person put the things in the right spot, but do we propose the right types of material, the maintenance, and for clouds, and things like that? Not just looking pretty, but functionality, so...
Yeah, yeah. To give you a little bit more detail, you know, we asked all of the landscape architect firms what their first impression was when they came to Winthrop Center, what could you screw scene up, what their sort of vision and idea was. And the woman from CBA Landscape Architects immediately said, you know, you have an opportunity to create a gateway here. I have some ideas about creating a gateway. She had ideas about improving some of the walking trails, you know, the alley between...
Samuel's...
Yeah, and fixing that so that those spaces also work. So it's not just like green grassy space, it's also fixing up the sidewalks so that they look nice and they work well, and they're still functional for what we need them.
I appreciate that explanation. When it was first proposed, it was, I thought it was proposed to design the green space, so...
Yeah, and I learned a lot in this process about what landscape architects do. And I think she has a much broader skill set. And, you know, even if, you know, under the previous design of Hagman Road was closed, maybe all of our, you know, pedestrian space was concentrated in one area. But if we keep Hagman Road open, it may be possible to spread some of that public space out and the improvements over a broader area.
You have a scope of work?
There's a proposed scope of work and a fee scheduled with the, from the CBA.
Have you had a chance to see that yet, Steve?
I should go look at the proposal.
Okay. So maybe over the course of the next 24 hours, if we can collaborate, and just, again, so we can get this stuff moving as quickly as possible at that point, Council, dear.
And if we are talking about this, and we're talking about, I think Steve had said that, town manager to take a vote tonight on Hagman Road. But basically, what we're saying, if we're going to start spending money, assuming Hagman Road is going to be open, we're also now, I'm assuming by getting somebody like this, assuming that the Hagman extension is going to be closed. Because that would change this whole thing again.
Well, the important thing is to get the drainage.
I understand on the drainage, but if we get to the point where we're hiring somebody, we're going to have to make another assumption. You know, we're not going to go out till November 1st and then say, we're going to keep Hagman extension open, because that's going to change everything that this person's probably did. You know what I'm saying?
I understand.
So we're going to have to make decisions probably prior to this.
Well, the landscape, I think we can, we can push off for another meeting or two.
Right, but I'm just saying, we're still going to be in October. We can't hire somebody if we, if we...
No, that's what I mean, we can, we can push, we can push that contract and tell them, because of the changes, we're going to hold the contract. But for tonight's issue, the drainage, so...
Absolutely, for the engineering, we understand that.
We can start below and then work our way up, and we can push the architect maybe another meeting or two to have a full discussion.
And again, we're going to have to fund that, so be prepared. Any other questions?
And the engineering changes.
And the engineering changes, yeah. Which we do have a contingency for, however.
The engineering contract is depleted at this point.
Is it, okay.
Now you need drawing...
Right. So every time we make a change, you know, it kind of costs us some money, so... Anything else from the council? Second, I'm not entertaining that motion right now. Town manager's report.
I just want to remind the councils, the fall forum will be coming up. I'll be working on the agenda with the council president. WCAT connectivity issues, I think a lot of you got a call after the last meeting. I've certainly heard a lot of complaints about the connectivity issue. So what we have, what have we done about it? We're currently examining the fiber that comes in from the coming school into this building, seeing if there's capacity, if there's not capacity, if we do have funding source identified to pull more fiber. But before we sign any contracts or anything, pull more fiber, we want to see what we're using our fiber on now. And we can condense it and consolidate some of those to... it and consolidate some of those to free up some lines for WCAT. It's a public-private partnership, we're going to take care of the fiber end, Mike's going to take care of the equipment end to get us back live, hopefully by next meeting. So I just want to assure everyone we're on top of that. Contract five update, I've distributed in your packet, we also posted this on the town website on the projects and presentations. It includes your funding sources and the votes, the dates of the votes that were taken, the overall project and operations, and we're looking to start this project on October 1, and we'll start down on Hadassa, Pearl, and Underhill, and then work our way up through Hutchison and down next spring, more than likely on Revere Street, South Main, and Taylor. So if there's any questions or concerns, please let us know.
And again, if I could just jump on that, a lot of people are not real happy with all the constructions going on and the detours, but this, we're finally being proactive on things, and I know it hurts and it's inconvenient and it beats up our cars and gets us all dirty and can't get the house, but all of this, all of this engineering and work that's being done was neglected, not because of any irresponsibility from previous administrations, because we never had the money. Finally now, we've got some of the money to do some of these projects, and we're getting it done, which will save us in the long run. So we're, again, we're all working hard to make some things happen that have not happened over a period of time because of fiscal issues, not because of irresponsibility, but there's a reason for all of this demolition and all the work that's happening.
And the good news is on, you know, around business districts, that all this work is done in any of the business districts.
No, no, I know.
It's on the Highlands, it's on the center. So Revere Street will be impacted slightly in the spring.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
The parking clerk asked me to propose a ordinance change on the left-hand turns, right-hand turns off of Almont and Locust to identify, to kind of mirror the new current start and stop times of school. They have the old times posted, so I asked that to be referred out.
Refer it to.
Either Rules of Law or the Public Safety, whatever you.
Yeah, okay. Go refer it out. Phil's favorite.
That's the thing that you just sent from Michael, right?
Yep, that is. Public records requests, we've received a lot of them lately, we've been responding to them as quickly as possible. Calla Vitale is the records keeper by statute and appointed by Jim McKenna. She's been doing a fantastic job, and we're trying to get them within no more than a week, but we have 10 days, but we're trying to get them out quicker, so just be aware of that. I've, at the direction of the council, acting president last week, Mr. Boncorrie, directed me to get proposals from three executive research recruitment firms for the town manager position. I was able to get two for you for tonight. The third one that responded was too busy and didn't want to respond and give a proposal. So that third one was contacted, but they couldn't get to us until at least December. And so he didn't ever, he said he was going to send me an email, he never sent me an email.
So we reached out to three different organizations or considerations, and we received two back. We will be discussing some of this under new business.
It's just your choice.
Yeah. And also, everybody, all the councils should have received electronically these proposals, just FYI.
Talent Day, I love Winthrop Day, is this Saturday.
Yeah.
I heard Chief Flanagan might be in the dunk tank, so please pay attention to the dunk tank times.
I'll pay it down.
And get down there, it's for a great cause, all the money goes to the veteran food pantry, so please come down and dunk them. The pilot project, the question and answers were posted under the presentations.
Yes.
And projects on the town website, that was the first survey we sent out, we will send out more surveys to get more data on what's been happening and if they like the change, they like the first one better than like the second one, and report back to you. I asked Al Lebe and his staff to propose a rodent remediation program town-wide, seems to be a town-wide issue, so I'd like to have a program and identify a funding source for that. Parks and Recs, we sent a survey for his summer program out, 40 people responded out of 250, it was a very high rating, they left comments on how to improve for next year, and Sean and his staff are going through those comments, so we're trying to be proactive about keeping these programs current and more interactive with the client, the clients that we service. I've asked the HR director to post a benefit coordinator, that position was funded in the budget, and she'll have that posted shortly and hopefully get her some relief so we can concentrate on other things that need to be concentrated on. I'll be posting an intern's position, looking for an intern in a master's program in public administration to come in and help with some of the data collection and sifting through all the emails. Certainly we've got hundreds of them on the center project, but we still need to categorize them and put them in a report to, to the council. Ferry service will be suspended through Saturday. That was originally due to the forecast, at the same time since we were suspending service, we felt it was a good time to get service on the vessel, so that was shipped up to Gloucester, will be shipped up tomorrow to get service and bring back down for Saturday, so hope to have that back up and running on Saturday. I also submitted a quarry policy to the council for their consideration, it's very important, we are authorized to run quarries, we don't have a quarry policy on the town side, we have one at the police station, we have one at the school department, but every, every license needs a quarry policy. So this is a model policy Stacy DeChiar has submitted to me. I sit on the quarry board, and we don't want to be in violation, so we want to try to get that reviewed by the council and their comments back to us.
Okay.
And committee members, a lot of committee members that are requesting emails, and I don't know what the policy of the council, they would like.
Requesting to have any.
Town, town or Winthrop email. If we do every member, we're going to have to increase the budget for emails for about $2,500. We can get another 50 emails, but right now we're at capacity. I would make a recommendation that we have one email for each committee that the chairman can, can receive, and that will reduce our costs, but also if we, if we have all these emails from every committee member, public records requests become problematic for my office.
Yeah. Can you make that recommendation next meeting?
Yep, certainly. Make that, I just wanted to get it when thinking about it, and I'll make it for the next meeting. Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
I have one second question for the town manager, and we'll go back to the center, but two spaces at the end of Woodside Ave. that are deemed not parking, but I had heard that they are parking now, do you know about that?
I don't, they were originally deemed no parking after myself and DBW Director Calla looked at the swings, we wanted to make sure there was plenty of room to swing.
Did he just step back?
He ran on me. The problem is, is we didn't have a chance to reline the whole street. Under a relining of that, when this final pavement is done, you're not going to lose both of those spots, you're going to only lose a fraction of each spot.
And the second question is, on that Bartlett Road, can that be relined now? Because you did, they did some relining on Woodside, but they didn't do any relining on Bartlett, and there's been a lot of confusion, I've had people coming in just complaining, other store owners or whatever, just saying that, you know, with the handicap spots and stuff, people aren't, they've taken up two spots where there shouldn't be one, because there's no real lines there at all.
We can do anything with your appropriation. Right now, we're into Mr. Calla's budget significantly for the, for the pilot. He reported back to me that, you know, we're using a lot of his budget to run the pilot, so I will ask Steve if it's possible and what the cost of that is, if it's a small cost, and we can see if we can absorb it and what our budgets.
That's right.
Okay.
Chief, I had sent you something late today in regards to, it's come to my attention of looking at something about, there may have been an outside investigation and a report issued that the council wasn't aware of from the former town manager, and I was hoping you could look into what that might be about, I have no idea, and if there was such a thing that maybe it could be brought to the council's attention.
I'm not aware of anybody, I'll certainly be happy to contact Al Lebe, the council, and review it with him. I didn't review every file update I took over.
Sure, no, no.
But certainly I can, I can.
And then I just mentioned something about, in regards to contracts and hiring, I sent you something too, that's all.
Okay.
I just, I wanted to just ask a question about building off of the parking meeting that we had, I think there was a lot of great suggestions that took place at the meeting, and I remember a couple of months ago, I thought we had formed a committee to, to sort of address some of the parking issues, and I think now would be a great time to start that.
Thank you for bringing it up, because I forgot to mention it in my report, so I appreciate that. I will ask the council to actually give, give us a scope of what that committee is doing. I think a scope is very important, any committee that's looking at anything or any investigation is going, you want to narrow the scope. What, what's the council looking for this committee to do? And then charge them with that scope and let them do their work.
And we had some discussion about that today, so, would you like to be part of designing that scope?
Absolutely.
And bring it to the council, and we can kind of critique it.
We'll work, we'll work with them on the scope.
See Council Christopher what happens when you ask a question. Welcome aboard. But thank you, I'd appreciate it if you could help us with that, thank you. Okay, where are we? We, town manager, school department update. I have to say, I just got back from vacation a week ago, in case people can't tell from my tan. So I was not able to make the, the school department meeting, the school committee meeting. I did talk to the superintendent and let her know, I know we have someone from the school department, Ron, if you're here, was there anything that I should know, that anybody should know?
The superintendent reported that the opening day went very, very well. She reported that she's working with a company on an app for parents, so they'll be able to know where the buses are in the morning, depending on the time of day in case the weather is bad. The app is very inexpensive for the town, the parents get it for free, and I guess right now the police department is investigating to make sure that there's, you know, the safety is proper and so forth, and there's no way that the kids are going to have any problems with it. She also, she continues to lead with parents and community members, the superintendent has met with CASA, they're working on a back-to-school night with high school athletes. This will be coordinated by the athletic director, Matt Serino. She's told that Ms. Howard has met also with the adjustment counselor, employees of the 21st Century Grant, who works for families who need English language learners, they're working on helping new families enter the community. So that was basically the hot name.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Okay, we're going to old business, Winthrop Middle School site rezoning recommendation from Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee. Tell me about that. I was not here at the last meeting, so. Council Vice President, no pressure.
No, it's no pressure, wait. Yeah, we're just waiting for the planning board.
Okay, so that's a planning board. All right, thank you, relieve my pressure, thank you. Parks Committee request will eliminate current parks committee and establish a 501(c)(3) status. I know that's been some discussion, town manager, if you.
Yes, waiting for the.
We do have the chairman.
Waiting for the written legal opinion from KMP.
Okay.
But their verbal recommendation would be develop a friends of and retain the authority of the council as a whole authority for all committees and subcommittees, since it's in the charter. They said modifying and amending the charter is a long process, and we have a five-year review process here in Winthrop, so that would be their recommendation.
And that's something we do with.
The senior center, we have one set up in the library.
Friends of, it'd be basically running in conjunction with the Parks Department, with the Parks Committee. Any questions you might have?
I'm not really clear on what.
So it would be a separate 501(c)(3) that would be used to raise funds and to work and to fund some of the projects that the Parks Committee puts before the council.
We can share with you how the other ones are set up and how they interact with the senior center and put you in contact with them, so you can have a more understanding of how they operate.
So would there be, still be a Parks Committee?
There would still be a Parks Committee, yeah.
I think what they asked, the petition brought to us, they want to dissolve the Parks Committee.
Right.
And become the 501(c)(3).
Right.
So I think what we could do is dissolve the Parks Committee and make it a friends of the Park Committee, that kind of thing, but.
I think that's what, that's what Paul wanted to address, suggesting that we should.
Against, because then once you do that, you lose, you lose your authority, you're over that committee. Town council and the president specifically to appoint has the appointment rights with the concurrence of the full council, so they were trying to protect jurisdictions and boundaries.
Yeah.
And I, if I may, I think that the folks on the Parks Committee currently understand that, and I think we're all on the same page here, it's just a matter of.
Yeah.
Studying the logistics, I mean, I think that the Parks, folks on the Parks Committee now want to focus on fundraising, which they're not able to do appropriately as a town committee.
Yeah, I think it would be beneficial to the Parks Committee. Again, it's worked with the, with the senior center and, who else have we said?
The biggest one, of course Viking Pride.
Viking Pride's another, yeah. So if we're as big as Viking Pride, we're going to have some great green space, but it will work and we'll be in touch relative to getting that established, okay? And nice, nice work that you folks do, we appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. It is a struggle with the fundraising that we're doing now, like playing for months and months to a fundraiser, it will, you know, put all this work into it, sponsorship, raffle items, getting teams together and things like that, and all these ideas, it will put it all together and raise maybe $2,000 for the whole night. And, you know, with having a 501(c)(3) status, it opens up so many more doors for us and a lot of the projects that we have in our mind, that we want to approve Parks, because Parks cost way more than $2,000.
Sure. I think, yeah, a lot of the same folks who are on the Parks Committee, I would imagine would be on the 501(c)(3) members of, if I understand it correctly.
Yeah.
So I think it'll run nicely in conjunction with, allow you to increase your revenue, so that's, that's the hope. I think it'll happen, so.
Yeah.
We'll support that also, I think as a council. Okay. Town council will review a letter from Council Christopher regarding the Charlie Cart Fair collection box.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, again, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'm not familiar.
At the last meeting, a letter came from Council Christopher, we put over to this meeting, so there we could see the letter, and we could make a motion at this meeting for the council to send it officially from the council to the MBTA. And I believe the motion needs to be made now.
I'll make a motion.
Second the motion. Okay, the motion is?
That we send the letter that Council Christopher drafted, send it to the appropriate people at the MBTA.
Okay.
And that was second, a good discussion.
So could, I'm not sure I have the letter here with the motion, do we have the actual?
Yeah, it's in the package.
It's in the checkered package.
Yeah, no, no, I know, it's just that I'm finding, I haven't shoved one. Council Terry's looking at this, he says, come on, get this meeting moving, I can deal with it.
We need this letter signed by everyone, by all the town councils.
Okay, all right, so I didn't see this. All right, so you're looking for us signatures?
Yeah, everyone would sign it.
Yeah, so has been a motion, and motion's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so we'll get this signed.
If you want to pass it, sign it.
I'm sorry?
If you want to pass, you can sign it.
That's what we're going to do. I'll pass it far right, and then we'll bring it far left. Not necessarily in that order, let's see. Town council authorized a transfer of capital stabilization fund from, is that coming from finance?
That's not coming from finance, because we didn't get the okay on the reimbursement distribution until late last week, so we didn't advertise it.
Okay.
So we held it another week.
Leave that as a placeholder.
That needs to be advertised, we actually need the motion to advertise.
Motion to advertise.
On the 300?
Yeah.
So you want to advertise it?
Yeah. Please.
And we're going to continue that to.
Second on the motion.
Thank you.
Second on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Let's have it. Okay, and the new business appointments, we have some applications for appointments towards the middle school reuse committee. I've got two out of the three out. I've got two out of the three applicants which we will be appointing tonight. One is Emma Satch, I believe it is? Yeah. She'll be, and she's from the, she wanted to be appointed again to the middle school reuse committee. And also I have Brajan Kalimi. Both work with CASA. Mary Lou Osborne had recommended these two folks. They're pretty active in the community. They would like to be a part of reuse and we thought it would be appropriate to have some young folks on there to help out with some ideas of what they think might be appropriate. And it's also a good, great civic lesson, which I think we miss a lot of. These are the two youth members which I'm appointing tonight. Also, we missed it the last opportunity. We had an application and an opening on the scholarship committee. Former superintendent John Messero had applied for that position and I'd like to appoint Mr. Messero, being as knowledgeable and as committed to the community as he is, to be a member of the scholarship committee.
I think the motion approved all three appointments. Second.
Third. All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's getting late, gentlemen and ladies. And we're going to amend an appointment to the middle school cyber youth committee. Council Luteri will be taking the spot as of the town manager's designee. It makes perfect sense, whereas he's also part of the hockey environment over there, committee, on the ring committee. So that makes perfect sense to appoint Council Luteri. Do we need a motion?
Yeah. A motion to approve the replacement of the appointment of Joe Milovitz with Council James Luteri.
Second motion made, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Counsel, where can I send the gift basket?
Next on the agenda is, did I miss anything? How am I doing, Denise? All right?
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is discussion of the new town manager hire. As the town manager has said, I asked him to reach out for three proposals. We have received two. Each one of those proposals you receive in your packet. Let me see if I can find them. One was UMass Boston and the other is-
Ryan. Ryan Strategies and the-
Ryan Strategies. As you may or may not know, I'd like to move the new hire, the consideration for new town manager forward. I know we had allotted, I think, $24,500, if I remember correctly, from finance. That is correct. Each one of these came in far less than that, I believe.
One was significantly less than the other.
This one's 10, that was 23.
23.
23 and 10. You know, it's been my experience, I was fortunate enough to be here for the last town manager's search and I was very comfortable with UMass and the Collins Center, which is the, my choice, which I'm going to make this evening, to stay with UMass. They're familiar with the town of Winthrop. Any one of these associations are going to be drawn from the same pool. There's a cost consideration, but that's not the overall fact that made my decision. It's the fact that we've worked with them in the past. They've been very good servicing us. Not only was it a former town manager, but in other issues regarding the town of Winthrop. They're very familiar with the town, so my choice will be UMass Boston for the recruitment of the town manager. Also on the agenda regarding the town manager's hire is a committee for a search committee. I've gotten lots of calls and requests for folks who want to be involved with the search committee. The last search committee we had, and I can read it real quickly. It was a five-member selection committee composed of, I'm going to use the names just for historical purposes. Peter Finn, Paul Levy, Larry Powers, Carol Lederman and Marie Turner. Marie is no longer with us, obviously, but, and Riley praised the five-member selection. He thanked the search committee. So, you know, that's the same process we're going to be using this time and going forward. The only difference that I'm going to make or the only addition I'm going to make is I'd like to make it a seven-person committee to be announced. But out of those seven folks, I want one position to be held open for whoever happens to become the president-elect in November. I think it's important that we get the process started. I think it's important whoever's fortunate enough to become council president in January to be part of the process. I think this council is well-established and takes everything into consideration regarding the community and the process, in my opinion, should be started and will be started. So at our next meeting, I'm going to encourage folks WCAT, the transcript of Sue is still here, to let people know that if they're interested in the committee, just let Carla Vitale know. I'm not going to worry about applications per se. I think most of us know people who would be considered. But what I want to make it is a nice, well-rounded search committee. Younger and older folks, some seasoned, some younger folks and business folks. But I want it to work to get the best qualified candidates for this appointment to go forward. So that's my intention regarding the town manager hire.
Council President?
Yes.
I have just a couple of comments about how the committee is composed. I think it's very important that we have someone on the search committee that has some professional background with urban planning and also to have someone on the committee that has some professional background in managing government agencies and developing capital plans and strategic plans and things like that.
What I want to do, you know, once I receive these applications or the, you know, I will certainly encompass, you know, the wisdom of the council. You know, it's, the appointment's made by the council president. However, I don't want it to be, you know, myself, period. I want the input of the council. I think it's important for this council and for the town, so. And anybody who knows me, and I've been around for a little while now, knows that I try to be as inclusive as possible and I take everybody's opinion very seriously. So yes, I would include everybody for input, absolutely. Counsel Bajaj?
Just a couple, with the landscape architecture, we had them all present about what they could offer. I would highly recommend having, just if there's only two of them, having these search firms come in and tell us what they could do or at least, you know, or maybe the chief, you've read the proposals. What would your recommendation, what are your opinions of these?
I think it's the chatter brings forward that it's a recommendation, although I will take recommendations and considerations. Everybody's had a chance to read the two proposals.
I haven't.
Did Ron write in the package right there?
No, I know, but I haven't had a chance to read it, you know, because we got it, you know, just now.
Well, it's a decision, again, you know, I've looked at them, had some discussion with some folks about them and I think I'd like to move this forward, so that'll be the decision I make this evening.
Do we have any legal opinions on that?
It's simple, the chatter is the council president nominates a candidate for a town manager to be voted by the council.
Sir, we're not nominating the town manager. Please, through the chair.
Sorry, I requested from the town manager to look at a legal opinion of that and did we get anything on that?
We did. There's no specific language on the proper format. KMP opined that the recommendation would be that the council president puts up a company and the majority of the council would vote on the company or vote down the company the council president puts forward. So they're recommending that we follow the same way that he would appoint a town manager to appoint the actual search firm.
I agree. Okay, I mean, that's fine. Well, obviously do it that way. I just, it's amazing how we put more effort into a landscape architect.
Thank you, Counsel Bajaj. Counsel Devetta, did you have anything else?
No, I just think that, you know, we need to look at making this expeditious because the chatter also gives us a 90-day appointment for an interim town manager. It says that we should proceed expeditiously or some fashion of language they have and the council president nominates a candidate. The council president doesn't, he can just pick a name out of his hat right now and put it before us. There are no guidelines, there are no restrictions, there is no method that he has to follow.
So it's all, it's all up to the council president on getting a qualified candidate before the council. That's all the chatter says to do.
No, I understand this. I know that originally what we did is we approved to get this one in the, you know, in the beginning. We already made the decision to go with the Collins Center, so.
What do you mean, we made the decision to go with the Collins Center? Through the council, through the chair, please.
What was?
And Counsel Bajaj, before we continue our conversation, I don't think there's been any notion that it was decided prior to. And again, just to, just to refresh your memory, it is a council president's decision and I'm making that decision tonight. So is there anything else, Counsel Bajaj?
Yes, I would like to rebut, Counselor Nick.
Or rebut it through me, please.
Sure. What was the original motion for the $15,000 that was sent to the finance committee? I believe it had the Collins Center already directed on that-
Correct.
-to fund it. So to make this seem like it was a farce that I'm suggesting that is insulting.
I'm highly insulted, Mr. President. I'm highly insulted by that because the finance committee took that language out of it because with the explicit statement that the finance committee could not recommend a candidate, just authorized the funding. Now, where you come up with these ideas and these conspiracy theories, I have no idea. But trust me, we're a council of nine people and I know pretty well, and some people in this room can pretty much go to the fat, go and agree with me, that I don't always agree with everybody on this council. And several of us have very different opinions. So to say that there's a done deal, there's a conspiracy, the good old boys elite network, you know something? I take it as a serious, serious insult to my integrity and the integrity of this entire council to sit there just for political purposes, to smudge all your, the council and my reputation of 11 years of hard work and dedication to this town.
Thank you, Council. Through the chair, please.
Sure. Council President, so mysteriously then that the Collins Center-
If you don't mind, just address it without adjectives, please, mysteriously.
So the original proposal to the finance committee had the Collins Center on it. And yes, it was removed because there was-
It was requested by one of the finance committee members, if I remember correctly, if I read the minutes correctly. Is that right, Mr. Bajaj?
That it was requested to be removed, but it was submitted.
It was, and it was removed and then the final figure was $24,500 and it did have, it had no name attached to it. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I received it. I received two proposals. I've made my decision on which proposal I'm going with and I'm moving this forward. Anything else from any one of the councils? Council Vice President?
Yes, as the acting president last year, I directed it just so that everybody would know there was no, you know, we were fully transparent and there was no head deal made with anyone to get three different bids. We got two bids. The third person in the ass would not bid and I believe the third person in the ass didn't bid because the company was a former town manager of this town and they were just like too busy to make a bid because there were only about three companies that knew this. Of the two that came in, the Collins Center came in at $10,000 and Ryan came in at $23,000. Our council president has said he has selected the Collins Center, which would seem to be the logical one since it was cheaper, since we know how the Collins Center works and we've worked with them before. So just to stop this, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the council president's choice of the Collins Center, even though we don't need to do that. He has full right to do it. I make a motion to approve his recommendation. Second.
Most of you made the second and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And no, any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. And again, regarding the committee, that's to be announced. But I just want to let everyone know that there will be an opening on that committee for whoever the new president-elect might be. Thank you. Fall forum meeting date, we talked about that being the 17th, town manager. Memorials committee, I got a recommendation from Rose, and let me see if I can find that again. Regarding a Belle Isle, naming Belle Isle Marsh, what do we call it, Pavilion? Pavilion, which I think is an excellent choice. It came from their committee, the memorials committee. It's for Mary Kelly is the person being recommended for that honor. So I'd like to discuss it with the council and see what your thoughts are. I think it's a wonderful choice. Mary served the town for many years as a teacher, schoolteacher, as well as conservation. So it's an appropriate consideration. Anything the council wants to add to that or any thoughts about?
Yeah, I just think the memorials committee, I'm glad they've come to us this time. Should come to us for any building or anything else in town is named, it should come to the council with a recommendation for a funeral. So I pretty understand that they're asking for a motion in that form.
I would accept the motion from any one of the council. Motion from Counsel Luteri, second it. Yeah, seconded by Counselor Christopher. All in favor?
Aye.
And congratulations. I know Mary Kelly's had some health issues lately. Again, a wonderful woman who's really served the town well and you've got to love her. You've got to love her. So congratulations, Mary, and any, you can let Rose know tomorrow.
I would say we're going to have to retire our council president.
Okay, we're in public comment room. I'll take Jack. Jack and John.
In infrastructure down the center?
Yes.
Both wastewater and pond drain water.
Yeah.
Are there going to be any pump stations or lift stations to get this all going in the right direction?
I don't know, I don't think so, but I'm speaking out of school. I don't know, town manager. We can find out for you, Jack.
I'm a real good engineer and he was concerned about that.
Right, okay.
An environmental engineer.
Yeah, I would like to think-
He doesn't go to meetings.
Right.
I'm speaking.
I appreciate you speaking for him. But let's see, you know, we can just get a call into the town manager or you do have, and we can find that out for you. And to the engineering company. John, you had something?
Thanks, just a couple of things. I was very impressed with the couple of information on the landscaping commitment for the town, for the whole wooden center. Fantastic, I love it. Couple of things on that though, I've been working closely with an uniformed wooden center business association, okay? It keeps me going along rather well and I'd like to request to make sure that at least the association is included in the contact. I'm assuming that you would have done it anyhow.
Absolutely.
Because so that not only would that in fact be, not only would the residents of town have a different attention to the wooden center business itself, so I would like to make sure that we're a part of it. And please contact me at any time to get that going, but thank you for that. And by the way, just so you know, from my experience in manly departments like this, of a special project, we always had a rule of thumb of 10% of the total product, of the total product class that goes to landscaping. So we're talking about 8.5 million for the total product for the town. I would ask the town council to consider $800,000 for the whole project and go from there. And I'd be happy to support you on it if you'd want to make a motion to that factor at any time. It's, you know, it's near the present for that because you're right. Landscaping properly done, you can make a tremendous cost benefit benefit of landscaping products like this. Two other things, and one to go on like it is saying, I've been missing this. How impressed I've been with the quality of the work that is done by the towns, the patio gas for all the infrastructure around the town center, the helicopter town. for all the infrastructure around the town center, and other parts of the town. Not only have they got a real credit to the D W, they've done a fantastic job of that from my experience, but also, I'm your appreciation, it is a terrific work that's been done by the, what the police department, the police details that have enabled that project to go forward. Yes, it's been, you know, described earlier, in these kinds of projects, there's always a certain amount of traffic disruption, but without police details, you know, aren't we going to do? They basically enable that project to continue. And I get caught in it myself, you know, once in a while, left here, right here.
Got the convertible down when you go through?
You get that right, exactly. Only want to sound rainy. But I think it's a real purpose of the work of police departments, it's there to be publicly commended for the great work that they've been doing in minimizing traffic disruption and go with this kind of intensive, public, very intensive, interactive project.
Thank you, John.
Trying to get a ticket fix.
I was going to ask.
Hi, Linda Beck, yeah, I just want to, first of all, I want to say thank you for all who participated with CASA and with the Fed Up Rally and stepped up and also with our basketball tournament we had with six different teams of people in recovery, with the judge from East Boston. We had a great turnout. I first do want to apologize to Mr. Leteri. We had an issue with our audio and with our music of deleting some language with that hip-hop music. His family was a little upset and I did speak to your mother-in-law and I do, we do apologize that we couldn't shut it off and we finally got it unplugged and we did fix it. But we had a wonderful turnout and quite a few of you, the majority of you came and supported our event as well as Chief/interim, who did speak very well, is as first appointed. But I also want to thank you for moving ahead with our town public health department, not just because of the recovery coaches, which is an asset anyways, but just to have social working, the nursing, and Deanna's doing a major job, wonderful job, that this town will have opportunities to seek help, you know, in a public area and not like, they don't have to be ashamed. That's, we're offering this to our community, so kudos to that and I hope it continues. But thank you for your support and everything.
Thank you. Anything else, public comment? If not, public relations, we have Town Day on the 23rd, Jim, I'm getting it, buddy. 23rd, I love Winthrop, that's a Saturday, and October 15th is White Kane Day. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
I'm in the 10th, yeah. I'm sure there are people.